I'd like to call the Windsor Board of Education meeting of Tuesday, June 20th, to order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance and then after that, a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is always a special night, the last official board meeting of the year, and it also means it's the Art Awards and a sad goodbye to our current Board of Education representative from Windsor High School. So it's bittersweet in some ways. So the first item is recognition of the Windsor High School juried art show, Board of Education Purchase Prize. And I'll start with Dr. Haiti to introduce some of our faculty here.
All right. The Windsor High School Art Department held their art show this past May in the Windsor High School library, which included art, CTE, and fashion students. As far as the awards, BOE President Fury, Dr. Hill, and Mr. Parker, Principal of Windsor High School, selected individual student work which will be professionally framed and displayed as part of their permanent collection. I have here tonight with us Ms. Sarah Esplun and Ms. Lisa Smith, our art teachers at Windsor High School. I would please call up.
This year, Dr. Hill selected two purchase prize winners who demonstrate the breadth of our programs, with Tyler Hall showing where our students find strength in his ceramic piece, and Selma Siede-Schmidt showing where our students find hope in her painting. Tyler Hall's ceramic mask, The Namine Lion, was created as a reflective self-portrait in ceramics too. Along with the mask, students wrote diamante poems to analyze where they see these traits in themselves. After taking both the firefighter and EMS classes at Windsor High School, Tyler planned to pursue a career in public service as a firefighter. This is his poem from his mask. The Namine Lion. Weakness. Nervous, small. Fight, sleep, game. Fangs, pride, war, God. Transform, control, activate. Big, straightforward, strength. Selma's paintings, entitled Light, is a final piece created during her AP investigation, which focuses on how Muslim women are breaking out of the stereotypes that Western society is foisting onto them. Here's a quote from her AP statement. "Stereotypes include that Muslim women are oppressed, self-segregated, and lack creativity and a voice for themselves. I experimented through portraiture and text as a design element in my work to communicate through Arabic, noor, which means light, to show the power of all Muslim women and how they are breaking these damaging viewpoints, one step at a time." Selma plans to study computer science at CCSU in the fall.
For the Board of Education Purchase Prize, David Fury selected work by Nicholas Dennis. His graphic design focuses on geometrical symmetry and his favorite animal, a panda. With pandas being prominent in Asia, Nicholas chose to incorporate the panda to a character that was in the Japanese anime Jujutsu Kaisen, which was a panda. And the panda says, "Panda is not a panda. Panda wa, panda janai." Nicholas will be attending UConn and majoring in graphic design. And this year's Windsor High School Purchase Prize, selected by Breon Parker, goes to Yari Castro-Roman for her colored pencil drawing titled "The Power of Education," a piece from her AP Art and Design Sustained Investigation, where she explored perceptions, treatment, and violence toward women in a patriarchal society. From her AP statement, "Even the most modernized countries exhibit this type of prejudice that at times goes unnoticed because such treatment is seen as the norm. Such factors inspired the making of the pieces based on personal experience and how the patriarchal society could be perceived on a regular basis." Yari will be studying art at Eastern Connecticut State University this fall. Congratulations to our students for their achievements.
At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Daly to come by and take some pictures of the -- our award winners. I'll come to the front.
It's gonna be hard for me to shake some. I'm gonna walk over there. So you guys are gonna have to -- that one, because the art's right there, so they're not gonna be able to walk around.
Hop over.
I'd like to see that.
Tristan Davis. I'm gonna read the proclamation, or the certificate, I should say. Certificate of recognition for Tristan Davis is hereby recognized for his outstanding service as a student representative to the Windsor Board of Education, awarded this 20th day of June 2023, signed by myself and also Dr. Hill. If you could come up for a picture. that. And I won't be able to have to say, Tristan, if you have some homework or exams, you can be excused, we'll understand that, so. Next item on the agenda is audience to visitor -- oh, she's not here. Oh, sorry, sorry. The next item is -- I didn't -- I forgot they're not gonna be here, is the announcement of the Windsor Educator of the Year and Para-educator of the Year. Ms. Batchelder?
Great, thank you. It's my honor to recognize our Educator of the Year, Kathleen Stahl. Kathleen has made -- has been named the 2324 Educator of the Year by Windsor Public Schools. She began her teaching career in the district in 1992. She has been actively involved in various school-based teams, including equity teams, data building teams, professional learning committees, and also served as a science team member at Oliver Ellsworth as well as Paquannic. Kathleen recently stated, "As an educator, it is my strong belief and priority that each child reaches their full potential. I strive to reach each and every child as well as their family, capitalizing on strengths, personalities, their individual learning style, as well as their social-emotional well-being. My students know that I believe in them and in the power of yet. My motto has always been, 'We are a team,' myself, my student, and their family. All three units must work together to foster a love of lifelong learning, as well as helping each child reach their full potential as a well-rounded individual. We are excited to recognize and honor exceptional teaching, and Kathleen will represent Windsor Public Schools in the State of Connecticut Teacher of the Year Program." Our Windsor Public Schools Para-educator of the Year for 2023-2024 is Ms. Sandra Bailey. We recognize Sandra Bailey of Windsor High School as the Para-educator of the Year. Bailey was selected from the school building nominees following an application process with the District Selection Committee. She was nominated by her colleagues at Windsor High School based on her professionalism, care, and dedication to supporting student achievement. Bailey states, "My greatest accomplishment as a para-educator lies within the successes of the children that I serve. My purpose on this job is to help students meet their goals in every area possible, and when I see a student that I work with overcome challenges, then I see that as a great accomplishment for me. I have worked with students who have had social challenges, emotional challenges, and academic challenges, and when they overcome these challenges, I rejoice with them and affirm them because I too feel that sense of accomplishment." Windsor Public Schools is honored to recognize Ms. Sandra Bailey as Para-educator of the Year for the State of Connecticut. And we will be bringing them forth in our September Board of Ed meeting, where they will introduce themselves and also be able to give a little speech.
Thank you very much. Now, the next item of business is audience to visitor, Ms. Daly, if you could. Once you have your microphone, read the script. Thank you.
Good evening, this is Robyn Daly from the Superintendent's Office. If there's anyone from the public who would like to address the board, you may do so in two different ways. If you are using the Zoom application on your mobile device or computer, you may enter your comments into the Q&amp;A feature located at the bottom of the Zoom menu bar. Or you may raise your hand on your computer, if your device has a microphone, by selecting the participants icon on the Zoom menu bar, and then clicking Raise Hand, or by dialing *9 on your phone. You will be given three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. When you are called on, you'll be prompted with, "You are now unmuted." For clear communication, we ask that you do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own.
Thank you. And for those in the audience at the two-and-a-half-minute mark, Mr. Lockhart will hold up a red card indicating it's -- you have another 30 seconds, and at three-minute mark, he'll hold it up and keep it up, indicating to please wind up your remarks. For those who are -- if you call in and don't have a video of Mr. Lockhart, he may interrupt you when we get to that three-minute mark. Is -- let me start with people in the boardroom. Is there anybody who would like to address the board tonight?
Hi.
Read.
My name is Nova Jacobson, and I -- I live at 15 Lighthouse Hill Road. Today, the Board of Ed of --
Is?
-- Intelligents is.
No. Today, the Board of Education.
Of Education. The Board of Education is recognizing Ms. Stahl at Teacher as Teacher of the Year. In Windsor, she is --
Ann?
An awesome teacher because she works hard for us. She helps each of us. She helps us solve math problems. The -- she teaches to be --
Us.
-- us to be kind.
Kind.
She gives us lots of hugs. She always wants us to have a great day. She always reads good stories. She --
No.
-- Ms. Stahl, I love you, and you are the best.
Do I need to say my time to my daughter? Sorry, she knew they were speaking about Ms. Stahl today, and she wanted to be able to say something. My name is Rebecca Jacobson, I live at 50 Lighthouse Hill Road. When I read the agenda for today's meeting, I saw the item 7D was Discussion of the WEF Grant to the Windsor High School Gender and Sexuality Alliance. I don't understand why this topic is up for discussion again, for a number of reasons. This grant money is not from local, state, or federal money. This is a grant that has been issued from an independent organization, and we don't get to decide who it goes to or how it gets spent. Neither our superintendent or the staff head of the Gender and Sexuality Alliance is here to answer any questions, leading me to believe that there is no interest in asking questions, but simply taking the opportunity to voice disagreement over something that there is no control over. I suspect, and will likely be proven correct, that there will be objections based on indoctrination of our students. And to that, I say, that's not how being LGBTQ works. If it did, every gay person who grew up in a strict conservative or heterosexual household -- heterosexual-centered home would not be gay. But if you believe that kids can be made LGBTQ through indoctrination, I recommend you take the health classes our middle and high school offer for further clarification on the issue. The GSA is a group for students to join so that they don't feel alone, because students who don't identify as heterosexual or cisgender deserve to exist, even if you don't agree with it. Students who do not identify as LGBTQ+ do not need to join. This alliance meets after school and is not something that any concerned parent needs to opt their proudly heterosexual child from. As a taxpayer and a parent, I continue to object using Windsor Public Schools and these Board of Ed meetings as a platform to air racist, sexist, and homophobic views. You're entitled to have your own opinions elsewhere, but you cannot use the time and resources of this district to argue a far-right agenda that does not match the demographics of this town or its taxpayers. As a district, there are big issues to tackle. We still have a shortage of teachers, we have an influx of new students coming in, and enrichment will be starting after July 4th. There are so many things of actual value to be dealt with, and yet, at every meeting, time and energy are put towards letting the parents and students of Windsor know that this is what matters. It's certainly not students or educators. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the boardroom who would like to address the board?
Hi, James Madison, 8 Fitzmore Circle. I'm an atheist, so I'm not here to moralize to anybody. And I strongly support the right of consenting adults to do whatever they want with other consenting adults. My concern is that there are two basic problems in science: false positives and false negatives. And so if you tell kids who are potentially trans -- I have no problem with gay or straight, yar or t'yar, I got that. It's the trans thing that worries me. And if you tell kids who are genuinely trans that, you know, it's not okay, there's a problem there, right? Society gets that, everybody gets that. You're wrapping the rainbow flag on June, right? You got that. The problem is, there's also the idea that children are highly influenceable, right? And we know, from the science, that has been published long before it became politicized, that if you socially transition children, they are much more likely to go on puberty blockers. Puberty blockers are scary. England just a week or two ago outlawed them for gender-affirming care, okay? If you put a kid on puberty blockers, their odds of going on to hormone therapy goes way up. Now, we know that about 90% of teenage, mostly girls, who have gender dysphoria ultimately resolve, most of the time, to be gay, or just totally resolve it. And we also know that if you go on to gender -- excuse me, on the hormone therapy, your odds of going on to surgery for gender sex change go way up. So there is a very distinct scientifically proven -- read this if you care to, this is my evidence, it's all cited in the back, that says, "If you start to socially transition children, they will much more likely to go on puberty blockers, much more likely to go on hormone therapy, much more likely to undergo surgery." Undergoing surgery means a lifetime of taking drugs, millions of dollars in medical intervention. As I've said before, it will generally make them sterile, and it will generally make them incapable of orgasm. Now, you're backing this stuff up to a kid's age. Again, consenting adults, you do you, man, this is America, bring it, love it, right? But when you start talking about kids, they are very impressionable, and the path of that impressionability has a lot of science behind it. Now, there's a lot of obvious social evidence that telling people it's not okay to be gay, it's not okay to be whoever you are genuinely inside, is a problem. This society is fully acknowledging, we're trying to address it. But just understand, there's two types of problems in this space. You can say to kids who are somehow different from the majority, "Hey, that's not okay, and that's what happened for thousands of years, and we're trying to fix that." But you can overdo it. These are impressionable children, and we have to be very careful about the path we set them down.
Thank you. Anyone else in the boardroom who'd like to address the board tonight?
Am I supposed to sign?
You could put your name and address.
Okay.
And let us -- and also speak it as well.
Okay, I'll -- once I have a pen, I'll do that. Thank you. I like this pen. That's okay, I'm gonna give it back. I've been a pen stealer in the past, so trying to not do that anymore. Good evening, thank you. Okay. My name is Catherine Grimshaw Parker, and I am a board member. I live at 166 West Street in town. And I am a board member on the Windsor Education Foundation. We noticed that one of the grants we awarded to a Windsor teacher is on the agenda. Specifically, the agenda item, which is being presented by Mr. Paul Panos and supported by board members Ms. Jill Kanter and Mr. Jeremy Halick, is a discussion on the part of the Windsor Education Foundation Grant Award from March 21st, which states, "With support from their teacher, students in the GSA will facilitate workshops with middle school students to help build connections before high school." Although I am eager to hear from Mr. Panos, from Ms. Kanter, and Mr. Halick as to what specific concerns they may have regarding this grant, I first have a couple of questions regarding this agenda item. I'm concerned and wondering, as a taxpayer, that this agenda item is even one of the items in discussion this evening, and it's interesting to me that this board even has the time to discuss this issue. It says a lot to our community that you, Mr. Panos, Ms. Kanter, and Mr. Halick, would raise this agenda item as a Board of Education -- as Board of Education members, whose job, in my opinion, is to support and advocate for educators and students and families in this community, and that you would raise this issue during Pride Month, which should be a time that you do your jobs extra. This board should be supporting the LGBTQIA+ community all year, but in June, all members should be showing extra support. However, I'm not surprised, as I could be wrong, please correct me if I am, that I did not see the three of you at the Juneteenth celebration on the Windsor Town Green yesterday, which did highlight and honor Black freedom. However, the event also incorporated LGBTQIA+ pride and support. But that's because most marginalized groups also support other marginalized peoples. Quickly, before my time is up, I would like to add my guess as to why this agenda item has been added, and that specifically, Mr. Panos, you brought up the sentence in the grant, which again states, "With support from their teacher, students in the GSA will facilitate workshops with middle school students to help build connections before high school." I am, of course, eager to hear the specific concerns, and please know that I would like to specifically hear the specifics, because I want all of our constituents in this community to know exactly where you stand on this issue. I can, however, make some educated assumptions. I have been an educator for the last 12 years, a middle and high school teacher for six, and a school administrator for six. I feel as though I deeply understand the needs of middle and high school students, especially those most marginalized, most underrepresented, and those most in need of community. I can tell you that my guess is that your concerns are about middle and high school students building community together. I can confidently say that youth need community. They need windows and mirrors. And what I mean by that is they need to see themselves represented in the people around them, and they need to see into the lives of others who are different from them. I think that adults need that too, clearly. Mr. Panos, Ms. Kanter, and Mr. Halick, instead of --
Please wind up your remarks.
-- instead of queer and marginalized youth seeing you in their community, celebrating them like you could have done yesterday, you have chosen instead to call into question adults and youth who are supporting and building community with them, actively in your place. So it is clear to me, but I'm eager for the rest of this town, this state, and this country to deeply understand your standpoints.
Excuse me, your time is up.
So it can be clear to others as well. My last sentence. As you -- as we have learned by viewing many Board of Education meetings and town council meetings across the country over the last year, social media is always watching, so please help us understand your specific concerns. Thank you, and I apologize for going over time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the boardroom who'd like to address the board tonight?
Hi. Is this on? No. Is it on? Okay, okay. Sally Grossman, 34, Remington. This is in regards to item 7D of the agenda. At the March Board of Ed meeting, the Windsor Education Foundation presented six grants that it was gonna award to teachers in the school system. During this meeting, Ms. Kanter and Mr. Panos disapproved of only one of those grants, and it was the one given to the Gay Straight Alliance at Windsor High School. This grant would allow high school students to help middle school students make connections and prepare them for high school. Both of these board members said they think that the WEF grant should only go towards educational issues like reading, writing, science, and that somehow this specific grant to fund a program where high school students help middle school students make connections is, and this is a quote, "a personal issue that should only be discussed at home." Mr. Panos went as far as to say that this grant is inappropriate because it connects older students with younger ones, and that a program like this is new. I would like to note, however, that in 2022, WEF gave a grant to the Kindness Matters Project. This project is described on WEF's website as the following. "Students are proposing several different activities to spread positive messages to the entire school population. Such activities will provide practices for developing positive relationships and building connections between and among all grades. Core group of students will lead development of activities that will reach across all students daily. There was no objections to this grant, to my knowledge, despite it involving older students building connections with younger students. So it would seem building connections between grade levels is only a problem for Mr. Panos and Ms. Kanter when it involves members of the LGBTQ community." So the bottom line is that WEF isn't part of the Windsor Public School system, it's nonpartisan, nonpolitical, it's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. Their money is not your money, or the town's, and you have no authority to reject these grants. So I really would hope the board would focus on more important things than picking on gay and trans children. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the boardroom would like to address the board? Seeing none, is there anyone online?
Yes, there's one hand raised. Excuse me, yes, there's one hand raised. And Ms. Essex, you are unmuted.
Thank you very much, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
All right, perfect. I'm Margaret Essex, I am at 95 Lighthouse Hill Road. And I'm just curious why activities for marginalized groups need to be quote-unquote "brought up for discussion" so, so frequently. Tonight's agenda, Item 7D, added to the agenda by Mr. Panos with support of Ms. Kanter and Mr. Halick, is requesting discussion of the Windsor Education Foundation grant funds already awarded to the High School Gender and Sexual Affectuality Alliance to help facilitate the LGBTQ+ education and awareness project. The funds have already been awarded, and not by the board, not by the town, not by the state. What is up for discussion? Mr. Panos, at a aquatic school PTL meeting this past school year, you were asked about social-emotional learning funding as there was potential for these SEL funds to no longer be a part of the school budget. At that PTO meeting, you expressed support for the SEL funding. The GSA at the high school may not be social-emotional learning coming from those funds, but it is certainly social, social-emotional support amongst students. Why should there be any question to the grant money? Again, already awarded, not by the board, not by the town, not by the state, being applied as described in the grant application? Continuous questioning of support for marginalized groups is getting old. Please stop bringing this up over and over and over. Show the support for the students you have been elected to support. The students, not just GSA members, support each other. Please see them as an example of humane and supportive behavior. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Ms. Daly?
There are no additional hands raised, and there are no questions in the Q and A feature.
Without objection, I'm going to close, audience to visitor. Audience to visitors closed. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Before we have the motion, is there anything that folks want to be polled? Mr. Wallaston, would you like polled? Financial report.
Financial report.
A, A is the financial report. Anything else? Mister-
It's gonna be Nathan and Paul Panos, right?
Yep.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approved Consent Agenda Items 4B Enrollment Report, 4C Food Service Report, and 4D Human Resources Report.
Is there a second? Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. All those in favors of Items 4B, 4C, and 4D, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention, do we know, Ms. Galensky? Have you voted?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries 900. Another motion, Mr. Lockhart.
Move the Board of Education approved Consent Agenda Item 4A Financial Report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos, I think Mr.-
Mr. Wallaston.
Mr. Wallaston first.
And then Mr. Panos.
Yes. Mr. Wallaston, you want to speak to it first, your questions, and then Mr. Panos.
I, I just wanted to make note of what it's looking like for our special education tuition. I see we're in the red there, so, I mean, we already know what you're gonna say, pretty much. I just wanted, we gotta say it on record.
Sure, so, as you know, when we were planning for a 23-24 budget, we increased the special ed district tuition line item by a million dollars. So we are forecasting right now to be about 800, 850,000 in the hole at year end, which is what I have been budgeting all year, because we knew that was coming.
My follow-up question, is this because of a, like, tuition raise, raising tuition?
Yes, so we have the same number of kids we've had for, gosh, five, six years, and we've quadrupled the number. The amount of special ed district tuition is just outrageous in these schools.
So, I mean, if by chance anyone from the state so happens to watch this video, please, we, we need, we have to do something about this, it's insane. We can't just keep being in red every year for special education. So I think this is something we have to rally towards as far as the, the costs that are constantly increasing, and we really need the support of the state on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Panos.
Just an overall question. You see here that the balance, you have 6, 6,245,000. So what is your guess by the end of all this?
Yeah, so this is the first year I've ever been a little nervous, to be completely honest with you. We have, up until about a month ago, you know, I, I knew all of our deficits and I knew of our surpluses and we were balancing out. But we have entered into a contract, the town of Windsor has entered into a contract for our natural gas. And the contract, we're going back, well, I'm gonna go to our lawyers, but we're also meeting with the company and then the third party next week, the town, not town manager, excuse me, the town finance director, Jim Burke, and I, because the contract that was signed is, certain months, we're paying three times more than we have paid in the past. And in my opinion, it, the contract was entered into under false terms, in my opinion. I wasn't involved in that contract, but now I am involved because I have to pay these bills, and that was, it wasn't budgeted, and it wasn't explained the way I believe it should have been explained. So at this point, there's nothing I can do for this year, but to give you an example, so just at Oliver Ellsworth for the month of March, last year, we paid about $5,000. Our bill this year for one month at Oliver Ellsworth was tipping $13,000 from 5,000. Natural gas, only natural gas. So my, my staff, we've been working on trying to figure out, you know, if there's any loophole in this contract that was signed. And I'm working with the town at this point, but, so for that reason is why I'm a little nervous. I've expressed my concern to Dr. Hill and Peter Souza in person and by email, because I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's right. We, something's not right. And this contract was signed under different circumstances that were told to, I believe, the town of Windsor. And now we're seeing something else.
Was it the town of Windsor that signed the, signed the contract?
Yes, so we, we've always piggybacked off of the town of Windsor for all of our electric and, all of our utilities. They signed the contract, and then we piggyback off of them for the rates.
So, I mean, after all, I mean, we simply go to the town anyway, or if we ran into a deficit with that item.
Well, right, I mean, I know, and I'm, we're trying not to. I froze the budget, I haven't froze the budget since I've been here. I froze it in late May. I mean, people have been asking me, nothing is getting spent. Because I don't know what, I don't know what next month's gas bill, there is no rhyme or reason for these increases. So we're working on for next year, but we're trying to just close out this year, at least stay in the positive.
So going forward, what are we gonna do with this natural gas thing?
That's what I'm trying to see if, I, I think, in my opinion, I think we found a few loopholes that I'm trying to discuss with our lawyers to see if we can back, get out of this contract that was signed. But, I mean, I can probably get into more detail if we were in executive session.
Is it an energy cost that rose?
Energy cost absolutely rose, but not to the extent that this contract is having us locked in at.
I assume most of this is heating.
Yes.
Building heating.
Yes, it's all heating.
So if this goes into a winter month, this is really gonna be-
Right.
So your projection then is that the 6,245 is not enough?
No, I mean, I, I, I'm telling, I froze everything. No one has bought anything, and we've even pulled staff sooner than normal to not finish out the school year, you know, the tutors, the subs, because I just don't know what that bill is gonna be. So do I, I think we're gonna come in maybe a dollar left. I mean, it's gonna be very close. But we've never been like this, ever.
So I believe that we owe the money, right? The Board of Ed owes the money legally.
You owe the money.
If it's $1 oil, it's, it's, it's more than, big bucks over here. But, yeah, I think if we ran into a problem, we'd certainly run to the daddy town council, right?
Yeah.
If they're good to us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Mr. Lockhart?
The town council is meeting right now as we're meeting, but this is something that the board needs to express to the town council that there's some displeasure for what we're hearing. I'm basically hearing that we had to basically shut down operations of the school district because of an uncertainty of a deal that we had no participation with through our business director. That's, that's not fair to our kids, and I think the nine of us would agree that we have an obligation to fight for the funding that we already asked for. And then once we get it, now it's gotta be placed on hold because of circumstances outside of our control. So this is very disappointing to hear, to say the least. And I'm trusting that Ms. Bachelder is gonna do whatever she needs to do to take care of this. This may lead us to down the road to spend some extra money with next year's budget to actually do an, an energy audit of all of our gas burning peripherals within our physical plant to make sure that there's some efficiencies there, just to prove that it's not the aged infrastructure that's causing the issue, but it's the actual utility that's, that's taking advantage of us. I'll, I'll put it that way. So this is something that we're gonna have to monitor, because before you know it, it will be September. And then once it gets to September, October, it's gonna start getting cold. And what we cannot have is our staff not warm in our buildings, no matter what the cost is. But we did not budget for this during this last budget cycle, to have these type of high costs in our buildings. And then we cannot afford to have programs cut, teachers not hired, or even just layoffs. This, this cannot, it just can't happen. So I'm hoping that this board will take some type of action, even if as we instruct the president to go to talk to the town council or something. But this has to go on the record of showing that we have huge displeasure on this matter.
Ms. Bachelder?
I would just ask if you would just allow me to see if I can figure it out over the next couple of weeks, because we've been doing a lot of digging and trying to get to the bottom of certain things. And I think, I'm hopeful that if, with lawyers, we could get out of this contract for how they prepped it, how the, the third party prepped it and budgeted it. So if you can just give me, you know, like, two weeks before you-
So what I'll say, saying that this is our last meeting, Mr. President, of the academic year, and we're about to go into summer break. I'm sure the board will afford the executive committee the opportunity to discuss this throughout the summer at a minimum. And if we have to brief our caucuses through that forum, then absolutely. But if this is something that we have to bring up at our September agenda, I'm sure Mr. Panos and I will discuss that and be prepared to ask the tough questions of the town council or the entities that entered into this contract.
I, I think we ought to blame the chairman of the finance committee itself.
I take blame for things that I do wrong, but this one I will not take.
And I don't know, he's, he's the one who wanted to add more money to it. Any other questions on this item before we vote? I have a couple for Ms. Bachelder then. When you mentioned attorneys, are you talking about our attorney or the town attorney?
I'm not sure. So I'm doing, we're, me and my staff are doing the, the legwork of trying to figure stuff out so we're not spending money having the lawyers figure it out. But I don't know if my opinion of the contract is the same, is shared with the town. So I don't know if we can utilize their legal firm or if we would have to go to ours.
And is, obviously, we have a lot of buildings compared to the town. But is the town experiencing the same?
They are, just at-
They kind of get the problem?
They are, but they're, you know, they're looking at 500 versus 2,000. You know, we're, we're just magnified.
Any other discussion? I think we're probably ready for a vote. All those in favor of approving the financial report, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstention, motion carries 900. Next item is approval of minutes. I don't know if any minutes, does anybody want to pull any of the minutes? There's three different sets. Seeing none, look for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Fury. I move the Board of Education approves the minutes of the May 16th, 2023 PM regular meeting, the May 23rd, 2023 special meeting, and the sixth, and the June 6th, 2023 special.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Ms. Pan, Mr. Panos, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's bring it to a vote. All those in favor of the approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, abstention, motion carries 900. Next item on the agenda is the Student Representative Report. Mr. Davis.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So as you all know, this is my last go-around, so I'll make it a good one. So first, this is my favorite part of the year, because this is where most of the awards happen. We had our spring sports awards, our JROTC end awards, our art show, just so many things going on. I want to give a special shout-out to our track team and Coach Kelvin Kears for always pulling in some serious hardware. So next, we have our Honor Core Distinction and Scholarship Night. It was an absolutely amazing night, the presentation was beautiful. And I just want to say thank you to all the donors and everyone who participated and even just thought of us. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much, because you are really changing these kids' lives. Next, I will touch on the elementary school walkthrough as our 2023 graduates went to the elementary school, said some inspiring words to the kids. The kids asked us questions about middle school. And sometimes I forget that they have the same worries as us, but I know that I made it through, so I know they're gonna do it, so good luck, guys. That being said, our CIAC championship to track, like I said, again, guys, amazing job. You guys are killing it every single year. Next, I want to touch on our adult graduation. Congratulations, graduates, you guys have earned it. Our Staff of the Year, Parent Educator of the Year, guys, amazing job. I got to participate in one of those ceremonies with the band. It was amazing to see the tears and to see the work pay off. And finally, graduation and project graduation. So as you know, it has been that time, class of 2023 has graduated, finally. So we finally did it, and we made it through. So that being said, I want to say thank you, everyone, for taking a chance on me. There was a lot of people that could have done this job, but, Mr. Parker, you took a chance on me. I hope I didn't do too bad. I want to say thank you to God above all, because without Him, I definitely would not be here. Thank you to my parents, specifically my mom, for all the rides and all the listening to my reports. You know, Monday night, hey, Mom, I got a board meeting tomorrow, you know, you wanna listen to my report? All right, get it over with, boy, but we got it done. And I want to say thank you to all the teachers, all the administrators, all the mentors, everyone that has believed in me, because it has been a hard process, there's been some ups, there's been some downs, there's, there's been some, whoa, kid, you're swinging for the fences, be careful. But we made it, and I'm hoping we did it with flying colors. So I just want to say thank you to the board, because it has been an amazing experience. I will be taking this to Hampton with me in five weeks. So pray for me in Band Camp, because it's gonna be hard. Working out with, yes, and hot and humid, I already got my military boots yesterday. I'm not excited, I ran a mile in them this morning. It wasn't fun, but we made it. So thank you, thank you, thank you. So thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone. And I will be in contact from Virginia. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your service. And are there questions or statements that board members would like to make at this time? Ms. Taylor, and we'll go back and forth. Ms. Taylor to start.
I'm so excited for you. I've watched you grow up. It's crazy to see the, the freshmen that came in that are now graduating. You, Kruti, and Abby were just amazing. You're amazing kids, all of you are. But I just wanted to say I was at a scholarship breakfast this past weekend. And I'm not him nor Brittany Westbury's mother, but I was clapping and cheering as if I was representing the board there to support both of you. And you just, you're, everything you do has been dynamic. And how you pour into the younger, the younger ones, you're a leader. Go down there and kill it. I might have to come down to somebody's homecoming or something to see you play. But we are very, very proud of you, and you, you did. You, you did it with flying colors. Congratulations.
Thank you. Ms. Cantor?
Thank you. I just want to say you're an outstanding student, and you're very well-rounded. Most people aren't as well-rounded as you. You seem to excel in everything that you do, and you put your mind to it. And your dad said right on track of what you're going to do and accomplish it. And I like the fact that you talked to your mom before you gave the report. I think that's great. That's really nice. And I know you're gonna do extremely well. I enjoyed listening to you in Memorial Day Parade. Awesome job, awesome job, so proud of you. And I saw you at JROTC, awesome job. I couldn't attend every single thing. I wanted to, but I, I can't be everywhere at the same time. So I want you to come back and visit us. So when you're in town, come back to the board meetings and let us know how you're doing, okay? Thank you. Great job.
Thank you. Mr. Wallaston?
I finally get to say this. I never get to say this, young man. I never get to say it. I never get to say it. No, but seriously, it's been great having you here. You know, my few words of advice would just be, you know, just continuing to keep God first and, and hold on to those who truly and genuinely care for you. You're gonna meet a lot of people. But just focus on the ones who you can tell have your, your genuine best interest at heart. And lead with love, hold your passions close, all the good stuff, right? But those, that's some really good ones. We should all write that down, maybe. I think I started preaching, my clapping here. But yes, I'm very happy to have had you up here. And I'm very honored to even have sat next to you and see you at this early stage. And I can only imagine where it's gonna end up for you.
Thank you. Mr. Lockhart, and then, oh, Mr. Halleck? Then Mr. Lockhart, then Ms. Clace. Let's see if Ms. Julian.
Yes, sorry. Okay. Just wanted to say congratulations and best of luck moving forward. I know you're gonna do really well down there. And work hard, and don't forget about us up here in Windsor.
Thank you. Mr. Lockhart?
Okay, then. We're. I've watched this man grow knee-high. Literally knee-high. Playing the drums in the church band, playing all the instruments, being a typical kid. And got love for his father and his mother. And just to see you, where you came from and where you are now, I can relate. You're going into a world that's not easy. The world's not gonna make it easy for you. But you're prepared. You're gonna have equal amount of supporters as well as haters. Not everybody's gonna be for you. But God, as long as you don't let go of his hand, you're gonna be all right. I'm gonna make sure you're looked after. I'm sure everybody up here that's in a fraternity or sorority, we're gonna be looking after you. So you're gonna be well protected, you're gonna do well. I'm just hoping and praying that I live long enough to see where you're gonna be, because I see where you came from. So whether I'm here or not, God has something special for you. I don't know what it is, but you've always been a very humble kid. You've always been a respectful kid. Even in this environment with social media and everything that's going on, you've always been that kid. That, that kid's gonna be special. You, you, you didn't strive to be the best, you didn't strive, you just wanted to be Tristan Davis. And that's what I like about you. You didn't try to follow the norms, you didn't try to follow behind the in crowd. You was just Tristan Davis. And I'm just hoping that you continue that beacon of light. You're gonna make mistakes. I promise you, you're gonna make a lot of mistakes. You're gonna fall. You're gonna be great at a lot of different things that you do as well. But just understand, make sure you get up, you learn from those mistakes, and keep going. Just know you got a support system up here. You're gonna have a huge support system down there. You think, you think you got one up here? Wait till you get down there. People know of you already, and you're not even down there yet. Please understand that. It takes a village, and you're gonna be a prime example of that. So, young man, do well. I'm proud of you, I love you, I know you're gonna do well. I don't do homecomings, but I might sneak away and do a homecoming to watch you play. I pardon the emotion, but you just gotta understand, I've seen this boy his entire life. And to see him there, God is good. In spite of what I've been through, in spite of what all of us have been through, he allowed us this moment. This was a blessing to see this young man at this point in time in our lives. So one day, you're gonna be somebody like, you know what, I know him. That's what, that's, that's what's gonna happen for you, brother. So I wish you all the best. And I'm not gonna say good luck, because good luck means you're not prepared. You are prepared. Windsor High School prepared you, Windsor Public Schools prepared you for the next step. So go get it.
Ms. Clace?
I just wanted to say thank you for your service, and it was an honor to sit next to you and get to know you. And you will do wonderful. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm just saying.
Mr. Panos?
Yes, best of luck. I particularly like that you're a trumpet player. And as much as my son, my son was, is a, is a top trumpet player back in his day, as he is here and still is. So I just wish for all luck. You're going to Clemmons, right? You're going to.
Hampton? Hampton?
Oh, Hampton. Oh, I'm sorry. I heard, I heard something different. I thought, I thought they said, my, my hearing. Sorry. Well, best of luck to you.
Tristan, I, I think it's been said, but you'll be missed by many people, especially the group here, up here. I know another person will miss you very much, because I've talked to him, is Mr. Monroe, for your leadership with the band. And I was with Ms. Cantor, we saw your ceremony, and you and also our other, our, our earlier representative, Abby. Were honored, part of that air for, junior air force ROTC group. That, that, amazing how you guys are pushed and how you respond to it. And the, the efforts you have to put in, and, and the support you each give to each other is just really amazing. And obviously, the community service hours are out of sight. And your challenge to do academically, and you exceed the challenges that I know your sergeant put, mentioned that night at the ceremony. So best wishes to you. And, and again, as others have said, we'd love to see, to hear, see you back here at some point and let us know how you're doing, and hopefully speak to, there's always opportunities to speak at Windsor High School to the current juniors and seniors about your experience. So again, thanks so much for your service. Okay, next item is the president's report, and I'll try to be brief with this. People have already mentioned a number of ceremonies. It's that time of year. I went to the Sage Park promotion ceremony with, with Mr. Lockhart here, who had a special reason for being there. And also, the Windsor High School graduation at the Bushnell was a very successful evening with many of us here on the board participating in that. And I think the tradition that we started to establish where students from, from the high school go back to the elementary schools is a great one. I hope that does, that does continue. So that is all I have for tonight. Any questions on my report? Seeing and hearing none. Next item, discussion and possible action to extend the current hybrid format for the Board of Education meetings. Is there a motion?
I'm, I'm moved that the Board of Education, no, that's wrong motion, pardon me, strike that. Move to extend the current hybrid meeting format for the 2023, 2024 school year for board members and the public for regular board meetings, including special meetings, and leaving finance committee as a hybrid and policy, curriculum, and long-range planning committees as virtual. Executive committee meetings would be decided by the Board of Ed president.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. Mr. Lockhart, you have the first crack at this?
All right, so let's see. As stated, this is a motion to, to, to keep going exactly what we have in place. First and foremost, we want to make sure that there was more participation with the public, especially with parents. Make sure that they're able to participate in our, in our committee meetings. And if they want to participate in audience divisions without the, having to bring the kids out and stuff of that nature, or they're still at work, we want to make sure we keep that component. The board has liked the fact that the hybrid and virtual for, for committee meetings has been also beneficial as well as for the staff. For me personally, I'm a traditionalist. I'm starting to be impolled to this side of the aisle as far as the virtual. But I'm still a traditionalist, so I'm in strong support of this motion. I'm definitely, I'm a strong advocate, because all nine of us truly believe that we want participation, not only from the board members, but we want participation from the public. And we truly believe that during the pandemic, it has proven that it can be successful as well as not being abused. So I will be in support of this motion.
Any other discussion on this?
The same thing, you know, it just offers a, a lot of flexibility. And, and it, it, it really helps, especially the special meeting, the, the committee meeting. So I think it's an excellent idea.
Okay, so this would basically, again, go through June of, June 30th of 2024. So.
We might consider, of course, policies, putting it to policy next year and making it something more permanent.
I, I, I think that's, that's a possibility of sending it to policy, because we know there's some standard. Both our attorney shipment and Goodwin and Cabe have some boilerplate policies that we can look at to make it more specific. And we can always change any policy that we have, so. So any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay, abstention, motion carries 900. Next item is school liaison reports, starting Windsor High School. Ms. Taylor?
Good evening. I'll keep it brief, because Tristan said a lot of it. I was happy to be at graduation. It was, I don't know what the mood was beside, I could say, to sum it all up, it's just excitement. I feel like this class is just awesome. I don't know. Every year I say it. So it's Windsor, so I'm gonna keep saying it. A lot of, well, a few of us volunteered our time at Project Graduation, which goes real late when you're old. So I had to head out right before midnight, because, because I had to go to work in the morning. But it was just awesome to see, I believe we got up to 170-something students that participated, which is a really good showing. And just the activities for them, and the food, and the, the donations from the community. It was able to be, you know, pulled off yet again, so it was really, really great. And Tristan was there, and a lot of our, our, our previous board reps. But it was great to see them come out, because again, if people don't know, Project Graduation is a program to keep students after graduation in, in a space that is safe, so there won't be any drinking, driving, and, and all the other silliness. And we don't want Windsor students to become statistics. So it's an awesome program that they had even when I was in high school at Windsor High. But it's held right there at Windsor High School, and it can't be done without volunteers from the community. So Mr. Lockhart, Mr. Wallaston, and myself were there, and it was really, really awesome. Other than that, congratulations again, class of 2023. We are going to miss you. Do great, whatever you're about to do. It was great to see the parade of colleges, life experiences, going into work in military. I think they're, they're going all over the place, all over the world, to be honest. So I'm excited for them. And as we mentioned to Tristan, don't be a stranger. You might want to come back and sit on the board or something like me.
Mr. Wallaston?
Yes, I, I just second all of Ms. Taylor's sentiments. Mainly, well, not mainly, but a big, huge one would be the volunteers for Project Graduation. As a community, we all have to really see the importance. This is my first time participating, and I truly do. I've participated actually as a student many years ago, many, many years ago, in 2016. Long time.
Not many years ago, young, young man.
Not too long ago. But you know, back then, you don't really see the importance. You're just going, you want to hang out with your friends. But safe nights like those aren't possible without the community members that pull together and make it happen, whether it be like volunteer of your time, or I don't know how they pulled it off, or how they were able to do that. It was an amazing event. And that's speaking from someone who has to, like, plan similar type of events for their day job at, at the school that I work at. So that was a really well-thought-out and put-together event. And I was really proud to be able to volunteer and be a part of that. But aside from that, class of 2023, congratulations. You guys are adults, make good decisions, because it really counts now.
Thank you. Any questions for our Windsor High School representatives? Mr. Lockhart?
No, no questions for them, but this safe event that takes place, we see it firsthand every year. The staff and the parents work. I mean, people were being walked out of there that had no business being in there. Like, there was no room for opportunity for any foolishness or tomfoolery. Like, it was like a very safe event. I even had some fun. We was allowed to eat. I tried not to be a TikTok sensation in the gym, so I had to be supervised for a couple of minutes here and there. But for the most part, for the adults and the kids, it was just a great time. There was no silliness. The kids were really respectful. They didn't like to be told no when they couldn't do something, but they understood that if there was another no coming behind the first no, they were gonna be walked out. So the, the way the staff conducted it is top-notch. I, I felt very, I saw it in action, and it was in a very quiet, discreet way. Like, if your mom look, give you that look, it was that, it was that type of concept, and it was well-done.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, next is Sage Park, Mr. Halleck?
Um, thank you. At first, I want to congratulate our, our eighth graders who are, who had their promotional ceremony on June 9th. So definitely want to congratulate them on moving up to Windsor High, as well as our sixth and seventh graders, who also are moving up a grade as well and welcoming in a new sixth grade class as well for next year. On the first day of school, I know nobody wants to think about that right now, but will be on August 28th. Other than that, have a great summer, and please be safe. Oh, and a big thank you to our teachers and staff at Sage Park. I know they did a fantastic job this, of this year, so I just wanted to thank them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clace?
I have nothing really to add, other than to say thank you to our faculty and staff. They did a great job, and good luck to everybody for their summer. Thank you.
Any questions or comments regarding Sage Park? Okay. Next is Clover Street School, Mr. Lockhart?
Thank you. Just want to congratulate those kids that are moving up to the middle school. Want to congratulate Ms. Want to congratulate Ms. Principal Lee and her staff for amazing job this year. She's been a great find for that school, and the morale within that building is definitely doing very, very well. So just want to say, you know, you got from the security staff with Coach Smith, the janitors, everybody, it's, it's a collective effort in that building. It's my understanding that we're going to have a new assistant principal in the building starting July, I'm like, no, Clover?
Assistant Principal.
Sorry. Clover. Sorry. I'm ahead, I'm, now.
Did I, did I miss something?
Kevin, turn off the mic.
So, yeah, there's going to be some support coming in there for Clover Street School from administrative standpoint, so I'm just looking for great things, but congratulations to all of them, hopefully all the staff, just have a relaxing summer and come back ready to go in a few short months.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on Clover Street? Ms. Taylor?
I was just going to concur at Tricia Lee and her, her team. I went, I was over there to visit once, and it was just amazing. First of all, you have Coach Smith at the door. So there you go, you're greeted, you know, just with a stern but warm hello. And then it, you know, just, I don't know, the culture and climate of, of the, the building has just really turned, and, and again, kudos to a, a great first year. Awesome.
Thank you. Any other comments? Next is John F. Kennedy School. Ms. Cantor?
Thank you. Grade five had the promotion to the Sage Park Middle School. Congratulations to them. They're moving on up to the junior high. That's great, and they're all excited. And they sold out all their JFK t-shirts the last week. And also, this is a message from our acting principal, Mr. Gagne. He said many students have grown tremendously academically and emotionally, and the staff is very proud of them. And he wants them to remember there'll always be a JFK Eagle, and they want to thank the parents for always supporting them and helping them with their, what was it, their last day of school where they had their picnic? And also, the progress reports are electronic, and they can be viewed online. So it's nice to be able to do it electronically instead of sending out all this paper. So, and just, everybody have a great summer.
Thank you. Any questions for JFK? Uh-oh, that's right. No crying, there's no crying in board meetings.
I'm a mess. I went as a parent, but, oh my goodness, there's, Clover and JFK Step Up Program is so cute. I don't know if you've ever been, but you have to go. These students are getting awards, presidential awards, like citizenship awards. It's a big deal. And I'm not just saying this because my son graduated. I'm saying this because, you know what I mean? Yeah, and you know, and I'm not a nurse or anything, but I know how to be tuned in. You know what I mean?
I know, exactly. I'm a parent.
Exactly.
I went through the same thing from kindergarten on.
We just want to congratulate them, you know what I mean? Because it's.
Awesome job.
Awesome job.
And we are one of the few schools in Connecticut that offers strings, I think, I don't know if it's, it was first grade, it might be second grade now. There's one other town in Connecticut that does that, and that's why I keep bringing it up.
That's right.
And by the time they go to the next year level, and they're playing orchestra, it's amazing.
It's amazing.
It's incredible. And then they can play band in fourth grade, and then they do both instruments. And what's really upsetting is there's not enough room in their schedule in high school to continue taking everything.
We got to look into that.
Well, it would have to be after school, after some sports or something else.
Yeah, so anyway, thank you for your report, but I just wanted to share that it was a wonderful ceremony and a shout out to the acting principal, Mr. Gagne, was awesome. The program was awesome. And, yeah, Sage Park, here we come.
Thank you. Anything else for JFK? Ms. Golinski, Oliver Ellsworth, I know you're remote.
Yes. Hi, thank you. Oliver Ellsworth had a lot of really exciting things happen over the last month. They had their first ever humanities and STEM night, their science fair, they even had a spelling bee with over, in second grade, students, there were over 60 students who wanted to participate in the spelling bee. So that was just incredible. They also had moving up ceremonies for preschool, kindergarten, and second grade. And again, they, I've never seen so many cars end up working off before for kindergarten and second grade, because it had to be split up into two different sessions, but it was so great. These kids were so excited. They also had, you know, the best field day ever, and I have to give them a huge shout out because they had the best academic school year in four, six years. And this is including pre-COVID, and so, you know, I just, I really want to give Taryn Gruber and his staff a huge shout out because without them, they, these students would not be where they are today academically. So, great job.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Ms. Golinski? Ms. Golinski, thanks so much for, with your busy schedule these days, being able to be here. We would love to have seen you in person, but thanks so much for participating remotely.
Yes, of course, and thank you for extending that. That way, you know, anyone who's in my situation can actually still be a part of the board tonight.
Thank you. Last but not least, Mr. Panos, Paquonic School?
Paquonic School, of course, is the best school in the district, and they, I think, just to, just to throw a little controversy out here. We have, you know, Teacher of the Year, very high academic, you know, and everyone promoted here from the second grade on, and so we wish them all the best. I, I enjoyed very much participating with them and in PTO meetings, and they have a, they have a very good program going there. So I'm sure they're going to do well this, this summer, and take care of things and come back fresh and ready. Thank you.
Any questions or comments regarding Paquonic? I'll give one shout, one shout out, I know I've done it before, but to Mr. Horace White, who will be retiring, I believe, at the end of July. A wonderful person, role model, male figure in that school for 30, probably 30-plus, 30 years. 35, you know, as, as, you know, in the district. I knew my, my father-in-law knew him, that goes back a ways. And he'll clearly be missed. He took so much pride in that building, inside and outside, and going beyond when, when certain towns folks weren't taking their responsibilities, he, he did it. He did it with pride and humility and a great person. Okay, next item on the agenda is a discussion on the part of the Windsor, Windsor Education Foundation grant award from March 21st, 2023, which states, "With support from their teachers, students in the GSA will facilitate workshops with middle school students to help build connections before high school." I know another part of that grant was also having to do with a summit, and I'll let Ms., Dr. Haiti explain where we stand with that.
So the grant had three different components in it. One of the component was to facilitate a summit with high school students that involves different workshops. So the summit has not been planned yet. The summit is going to be planned over the summer, where the club advisor will be working to collect, open up for proposals, and then they will be reviewing proposals and deciding which proposal will move forward or not. So that's one of the component of the grant. The second component is educational, educators' professional development, so professional development for teachers in order to raise awareness of different topics that teachers need to be aware of so that they can better support our students. And the last aspect of the workshop, of the grant, I'm sorry, the last aspect of the grant is workshops for middle school students, where high school students are facilitating different workshops for support for middle school students and to open up some opportunities for students to collaborate and get to know what's, you know, what supports and resources are available at the high school. So these are the three different buckets of the grant.
And it's my understanding, Dr. Haiti, that nothing will be done between now and the September meeting regarding any of the, any meetings between middle school and high school students. Is that correct?
Correct, so we are on summer break, and there's no school-sponsored activities during that time. There will be no, there are no plans of meetings like that from now until we return back to school.
So I guess Mr. Panos is the one that brought that up, so I guess he should be the first one to be afforded to speak.
Yeah, I think it, it'd be appropriate to postpone this or to table it until September in as much as the staff is not here. I'd just like to point out that, you know, the main item was, it was kind of confusing as to what was in it, so I'm, we've received some information, which clarified that what all the money was and, and what schools were involved, you know? And so there was a lot of confusion from the way it was stated, but I can see, you know, the, the area, the summit that they're talking about is areas of high schools. So that's, that's not an issue here. And the other items with the teachers is not an issue. The only issue is what contact is there between the high school students and middle school students or students of different age? So I think we can have that discussion in, you know, on September, better than, rather than now, to give people a chance. So I'm going to propose that we table this.
Do you want to make a motion, Mr. Lockhart? Mr. Panos will end up seconding it.
Considering that this is not a motion currently on the table, it's just a discussion, it's a motion to table, so I will move that we table Agenda Item 7D of the agenda for today's date, Tuesday, June 30th, 2023, June 20th, 2023, Agenda Item 7D to the September meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Mr. Wallaston?
Yes, um, so I will, I'll vote in favor of, like, I'll vote in support of tabling this motion. I just, I don't, I, are we breaking any laws? Is there any policies being broken? This, this kind of seems like a waste of our time to even be discussing this in September because I don't think any laws are broken or any policies are broken, but that's just my, my two cents, I guess.
Mr. Panos?
I find it very disappointing that we have several citizens who simply cannot stand to hear an opinion which they disagree with and engage in rather vicious accusations based upon nothing in order to suppress public discussion. I think that's a terrible thing, and I think this is, it helps everyone to have an honest and open discussion on these matters. So I would be in support of having this discussion, you know, in September, and I hope that we will have a little bit more, you know, open-mindedness on the part of those who seem to always want to shut down debate. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Lockhart?
Yes, I'm, I'm in support of this motion because the superintendent and, and the WEF Foundation, as well as other entities that should be able to answer any questions, are not in the room at the same time. I do believe that one of the questions was asked and answered on an email, but at, but at the same time, I want to make sure that the public understands that in order for something to get on our agenda, our bylaw state, all it takes is three board members to ask for it to be on the agenda. So we may not agree with, it's placed on the agenda, but every board member, along with two others, have the right to put something on the agenda to be discussed in public forum. So I just want to make sure that that's understood by the public, what the procedure is in order to get something to the agenda. We draft the agenda through the president, through the executive committee, and then at any time up to 48 hours before the regular meeting, any agenda item can be placed on there with the support of two other board members. So I just want to provide clarity of how we got to this place.
And I, any other discussion? And I appreciate, Mr. Lockhart, because I was going to wind up with that myself, with the nature of, of how things get on the agenda, any board member, unless something is illegal, can be placed on the agenda with the support of, of two board members, so. And in this case, in particular, I'm supporting the motion because, one, Dr. Hill is not here, but more importantly, in some ways, Dr. Brasi from the high school, who's the one who applied to the Windsor Education Foundation for the grant, is not here to, to better explain. And, and knowing that one of the important questions had been answered that Mr. Panos had before about this being high school only for the summit, which is where the money is actually going, I think cleared that up for him, and he explained that before to us as well. So I will support this motion. Ms. Taylor?
Well, I just want to say that that's what audience, you know, to visitor is for. It's for, to get the public's, you know, comment. Public comment is important. It's, we're in a democracy, you want to make sure that we're getting a pulse check of what, you know, the public is thinking about. And I, I just want to thank people, whether I agree with their comments or not, that is part of our policy to, for people to be able to come and share how they feel about what we as a board, whom they put here to do the things, we won't know unless we have public comment. So I, I want to share that it is important for us to respect the fact that, you know, it takes a lot of doing to come and speak in front of the board. So I just wanted to share that. And also lift that someone from the Windsor Education Foundation did speak as well, and thank her for, for her thoughts as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion? At this point, we'll have the vote. All those in favor of the motion to table Agenda Item 7D to the September regular board meeting, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay? Abstentions? Ms. Golinski? Ms. Golinski?
Sorry, aye.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we tallied you, ma'am.
Motion, thank you. Motion passes nine, zero, zero. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Haiti?
All right. So I'm going to skip some of the updates that have already been shared to just make this a little shorter. On Wednesday, June 14, we graduated the high school class of 2023. Cruti DeChandria is a valedictorian for Windsor High School class of 2023. Cruti will attend the University of Southern California in the fall and plans to major in accounting and finance with a minor in data science. Cruti has been recognized by the University of Southern California's McCarthy Honors Program College and Global Leadership Program as a selected member. Abigail Moran-Viel is a saldi-torian for the Windsor High School class of 23. Abigail will attend University of Connecticut in the fall and plans to major in molecular and cellular biology on a pre-med track. Abigail also served as the BOE Board of Education Student Representative for the Fall of '22. Thank you to all our community scholarship partners. Because of your general support, our graduating seniors have received over $106,000 in scholarships at their senior scholarship and award tonight on June 1st. Congratulations to the Windsor High School girls' track team on their 12th all-time and fifth consecutive CIAC Class L state championship and an outstanding second-place finish in the CIAC State Open. The Windsor High School boys' team secured their eighth and all-time and second consecutive straight CIAC Class MM state championship with an amazing second-place finish in the CIAC State Open. The boys' 1,000-meter sprint medal, medley relay was named All-American, and they placed second in the New Balance Nationals this past weekend. The boys and girls both placed eights at Nationals, which means Windsor High School is the only school to have both teams, male and female, finishing the top eight in the nation. Their dedication, teamwork, and determination is just outstanding, so congratulations. The Windsor Public Schools Summer Food Program will run from June 19th to August 18th, Monday through Friday. It will be closed on July 3rd and July 4th at the following locations. The Charen Park at 38 Skichewag Street from 11:30 to 12:15 p.m., and John Fitch Park at 156 Bloomfield Avenue from 12:00 to 12:45 p.m. Due to changes in some federal regulations for the summer food service program, the child must be present to be eligible for a meal. No parent or guardian pickup is permitted, and the child meal must be consumed on-site. Grab-and-go meals are no longer permitted. Each child or teen 18 years of age or younger is eligible for one lunch per day. The menu is posted on the district website. The Windsor Public Schools Summer Reading Program. The Windsor Public Schools Summer Reading Program, Find Your Voice, is underway for students in all schools. Families can visit our district website for more information. We concluded the year with all our district administrators at our annual end-of-year leadership retreat. This year, we were very fortunate to have our leadership retreat at Windsor's own state-of-the-art new firehouse on Bloomfield Ave. Mr. Lockhart was able to come by and have lunch with us. I do want to give a really special thank you to Mr. Paul Goldberg at the Firehouse for all his help and time in making this event possible. The Windsor Public Schools Summer Enrichment Program starts July 10th and runs through July 27. We have over 200 students enrolled in a program, in our program that will offer a variety of fun and engaging activities. Registration has already been closed for this program. Windsor High School will be running credit recovery and credit accumulation for our high school students who need to recover credits or accumulate credits to be able to stay on track for graduation. Registration opened last week and will be extended through June 22nd. Only students who have been recommended by their counselors can participate in recovery and all juniors and seniors can participate in accumulation options. We have some good news to share. We are pleased to announce a couple of new administrators to our district. Mr. Matthew Spector has been appointed as the new Assistant Principal for Clover Street School. Mr. Spector is a resident of Windsor as well as a Windsor volunteer firefighter. Oh, lieutenant, okay. Mr. Spector has been a special education teacher and case manager for the past 11 years at Sims Berry High School. During his tenure, Mr. Spector managed students from grades nine through 12 across all academic content areas and was always a member of the leadership team. Mr. Spector earned a Bachelor of Science in Special Education, was a concentration in mathematics, and a Master of Arts in Special Education, and most recently, an educational leadership six-year certification from the University of Connecticut. Welcome, Mr. Spector. Also effective July 1st, 2023, Mr. Dana Gagne will serve as the Acting Principal of John F. Kennedy School for the 23-24 school year. Mr. Gagne has been an administrator for Windsor Public Schools for the past 23 years. He started in Windsor in 1999 as a parent educator prior to becoming a math teacher in 2004. Along with being an educator for Windsor Public Schools, Mr. Gagne is also a resident of Windsor as well as a parent of Windsor Public Schools. In 2019, he became the Dean of Students at Sage Park and held that position for the past four years. In addition to being the dean at Sage Park this year, in the past four months, he has also served as the Acting Assistant Principal at John F. Kennedy School. Mr. Gagne has already proven to be a leader to the WPS students, staff and families. His knowledge, training, as well as his proven leadership will make him a great addition to the leadership team at JFK. And our final addition to the admin team at Windsor Public Schools, Ms. Karen Lawson, has been named the new elementary special education supervisor for pre-K through second grade. Ms. Lawson comes to us most recently from Middletown Public Schools, where she is a supervisor of social, emotional learning, pupil services and special education. Ms. Lawson has been an educator for over 17 years and has extensive and diverse experiences working with youth in a variety of educational settings. Ms. Lawson started her educational career in Hartford Public Schools, where she worked for Inner Community Mental Health Outpatient Child Clinic as a member of their multidisciplinary clinical team. In 2010, she became a social worker for Windsor Public Schools, where she spent three years before moving back to Hartford Public Schools as a certified social worker at Capital Prep Magnet School. In 2014, Ms. Lawson was promoted to a leadership position with Hartford Public Schools as the district's social worker coach, where she worked for 20, from 2014 through 2022. Ms. Karen Lawson earned her Bachelor degree, Bachelor of Science in Social Work from St. Joseph College and Masters of Social Work from the University of Connecticut, and most recently, her educational leadership six-year certification from Sacred Heart University. We're excited to welcome Ms. Lawson back to Windsor Public Schools. And we know that she will be a strong special education leader for OE and Paquonic as well as an asset to the Windsor Public Schools. Welcome, Ms. Lawson. I'm almost done. Dr. Hill's coffee talks have concluded for this school year. Please watch for his coffee talks for the 23-24 school year, which will be posted on our district website. Tonight is the last regular board meeting for the 22-23 school year. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 19th at 7:00 p.m. here in the boardroom at LP Wilson. The first day of school for students for 23-24 school year is Monday, August 28th. And families are reminded to update their returning children or child information in Power School Parent Portal under Returning Student Update 23-24. There is a banner on our district website that family can easily access to get to that forum so that they can update all their information. We would like to give a special thank you to Jenny Howren, Howard Marsh, and Jamil Ahmed from WinTV, Robyn Daly, Lexi Checkt, our stenographers, for their expertise with our Zoom, and Sam Batshelder, Katrina Wicks, and Kevin Mararty for his assistant, for all their assistance with all our board meetings this year. Thank you all. And finally, please remember to visit our website over the summer, www.windsortv.org for most current information, athletic schedules, and academic calendar for next year. Families should make sure that all of our kids' information is up to date with their school as well as on Power School. And that concludes the superintendent report.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Dr. Haiti?
I just wanted to add that Mr. Gagne also used to coach soccer for pre-K too. So he's a very active man in town with a lot of different things going on. He's very good, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to say personal congratulations to Lieutenant Spector. Dr. Hill definitely stated that he likes to bring a lot of Windsor talent back home to Windsor. He likes to grow the talent. More importantly, he wants the talent to live within the town so that everybody has a vested interest within the town. So Matt, congratulations, and I know you'll do well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. The next is the social, emotional learning presentation. I don't know if you want to introduce Dr. Mallory for us, Dr. Haiti?
All right. The Windsor Public School SEL Program continues to provide a valuable service to all our children, families and staff of the district. This evening's presentation will review some of the SEL programs and its success throughout the year and some celebration. So I would like to call Dr. Mallory, and he will introduce his team.
Outstanding. Thank you, Dr. Haiti. Good evening, everyone. So excited to be here with you all on this last BOE meeting of the academic year. Happy, I have two of my SEL, of our SEL Avengers here. So we're just going to talk about some of the updates and some of the amazing work that's been happening here in Windsor Public Schools. So thank you all for having us. Oh, I'm sorry. I started off way for you, Robyn. Don't worry about that. Don't worry about that. There we go. All right, so yeah, so to this evening, who I have, I have Damian Morgan, our SEL specialist from Clover Street, and I have Miss Malani Gutierrez, our SSC coordinator over at the high school, who's been in Windsor for a very long time. So she knows all about, very passionate about the work. So happy that they both could join, join me this evening. Next slide, please. All right, so just three Ps quickly for, for our update, our purpose, process and payoff. So the purpose is to provide an update on SEL progress in Windsor. Some really amazing things have been happening and I'm so, super excited to share with you all. Our process walked through all programmatic improvements made in year two. And our payoff showcasing the year two outcomes and planning for further success in year three as we continue to, you know, just, just, just leverage all of the good work and initiatives that have been happening within the district. All right, so when I came to Windsor two years ago from the University of Connecticut, and we had the first presentation, we posed the question. And so in year two, as graduation just ended, posing the question, what skills do we want our children to have and be able to showcase when they graduate? So when we think about Tristan, we think about Cruti, we think about Taylor Faladico, just all the amazing students that are coming through Windsor Public Schools, it's the skills that we think about. I was fortunate to go to my first Windsor High graduation the other day, and it was spectacular to see the kids and seeing their bright faces, to see all of the achievements. I think the video at the end was remarkable, just the journey of their level of growth and resilience through everything, specifically knowing that they navigated the global pandemic. So I'm just super excited for them. And so when we think about the skill development and the things that we've been able to do so far within the district focusing on social, emotional learning, it's been remarkable to see buy-in, seeing students activate as they are being challenged around the skill developments that they see. And so we lead with this question because at the end of the day, what we saw at graduation, as you all have seen many graduations prior, that feeling of, as you all spoke about Tristan, we don't have to say good luck because we know that they're prepared. And I think SEL has a robust and amazing place within that experience. So just a quick recap, I'll speed over this really quick. But to those who are still learning about social, emotional learning, five competencies, self-awareness, social awareness, relationship building and skills, responsible decision-making, self-management, and the definition that we learned that I presented the last time last year with you all, the process through which children and adults boded develop the skills. Social, emotional learning is nothing more, nothing less than skill development as we're integrating that into their amazing academic experience through Windsor Public Schools. And so I just wanted to let you all, there have been no changes since I've been here and since the team have been here, we're focused on that skill development piece as we're helping students navigate their educational experience. So just a quick recap of year one, our initial plan. When I was hired from the University of Connecticut and the team, we conducted initial SEL strategy meetings with the admin of each school, district office, Office of Family and Community Partnerships. Were able to hire thankful, thankfully to, through ESSER funds initially, our SEL specialist that has been very critical and crucial to supporting our students and our educators on this initiative that we've been able to navigate so far. Conducted initial district-wide professional development trainings for teachers, staff, SEL specialists, making sure that we are powering and equipping all of our stakeholders around their skill development and their arc and their spectrum. So the more that our adults and our support staff can understand the skill development of themselves, but also what our students need, that true integration of the academic experience that we want, the culture and climate, so forth and so on, they can feel, you know, equipped and adequate with those skill sets. And it's something that I'm definitely looking forward to continuing to equip our educators with. Introduced communication on SEL skills. You know, the ultimate goal when we think about what skills do we want our students to have, you know, before they graduate, if all of our students, at a moment's notice, and our educators, at a moment's notice, could be able to articulate their needs to strengthen their challenges around SEL competencies and skills. And I think that's so powerful, you know, understanding that by being able to do that, you know, and focusing the level and language and communication on that is constantly helping build this initiative to what it is. And then in partnership with OFCP, our Christina Morales and her team of Family Resource Coordinators, hosting SEL events, which many of you have attended last year and this year, and constantly working on that SEL and family engagement. Next slide, please. So just really quickly, our theory of action for effective implementation. Our SEL framework is guided by a theory of action designed to support the whole child, school and family, research-tested. And it is something that, once again, as we see in Tristan and we see in the Cruties of the world and all of our students who are not necessarily trying to go to tops, top, you know, Ivy Leagues or private schools, with students who are going to, you know, into trades, going into the military, this is what we're trying to continue to work, which supports the district's mission, but also work on the holistic development of our students and leveraging the SEL competencies to be able to do that in that framework is helping to do that effectively. Next slide, please. And then real-world application. At the end of the day, many parents would probably agree that once they get to the end of the rainbow and they go off into the world, we want them to have good jobs. We want them to be productive and healthy citizens in the world and to be a positive contributor to our society. And so this is not only the skill development throughout their academic experience, but 92% of Fortune 1,000 companies value skills such as problem-solving, self-management, relationship skills, communicating clearly and effectively. And all of those things, we have a unique opportunity to continue to build throughout our SEL initiative, the skill development, which is only going to continue to help them thrive as they navigate the world, they navigate into industries. And as our generation and the next generations begins to retire off, knowing that the next generation will be, the next generation of Windsor students coming through our district will be adequately prepared and have the sufficient skills to be able to not only thrive, not only survive in industry, but thrive in a, in a very robust way. And so I want everyone to know that what we are building is not only just the experiential aspect that we want for them to have in Windsor Public Schools, but as they're navigating, and then ultimately, once they land the job, they'll be able to have those skills, tangible skills that goes within the technical field, that goes in every sector and industry in the country. And so I wanted to point that it does have real world application and it's something that companies need and are valuing within their work and their, their processes. Next slide, please. So just a quick, kind of sneak peek of what's happening from a social, emotional learning perspective. We are assessing, which we're about to get to, there's tier one and tier two lessons that are happening, one-on-one. I don't have to go through all of it for the purpose of time, in essence, because I do want to have my team give you all the practical application of how it looks. Gamification, though, I think this is something, you know, that at the high school and all of our levels, our SEL specialists are including gamification. How do we take some of the educational applications and tie in real-world application and questions? And we gamify it in a way to where students are having fun, but they're actually learning the skill sets that we want for them to have, which goes in tandem with their academic experience within the classroom. And many of you all who attended the SEL showcase last year know the Cruties of the world and what we're building at the high school, the student-led advisory, allowing them to really impact and impart their SEL skill development and then be the actual peer exemplars in front of their peers to teach these skills so it hits home peer-to-peer even more so. And so we're super, super excited of all of the things that we're doing and that we've been able to build within year two. Next slide, please. And then just quick indicators of school-wide SEL. Obviously, we want the tier one to be robust as we continue to empower and equip our educators at the tier one level, where our kids spend majority of their time. We want that explicit integration, which I'm so grateful, working with Dr. Haiti and her team. We're going to continue to have some more amazing SEL integration and knowing that it's not one or the other, it's both and. And I think that's going to really have some real cool implications as we continue to build moving forward. Youth voice and engagement. We want to continue to activate and empower student voice, right? This is their experience. We want them to have the autonomy. We want them to be able to take the ownership of this experience and their skill development. And that's a humongous part of the indicators for school-wide SEL. And then, you know, focus on adult SEL. We want to continue to empower our SEL, our stakeholders, our educators, our support staff. And then obviously, the authentic family partnerships that we, and Christina Morales, our collaboration with our team has been really amazing and we're looking forward to do even greater things. Next slide, please. And then our educators, just to quickly say, 85% plus of our teachers are committed and interested in social, emotional learning. They understand the tangible benefits and ROI that as they're able to better understand their social, emotional learning spectrum, as they are getting their, their skill developments are increased through PDs and other sources, as our students are learning it, it's going to decrease any loss of academic time because it'll be this kind of symbiotic, you know, relationship that the academic experience, what we want, can be robust. And so it's happy that our educators are constantly saying, no, we want this, we want time. We want to learn more skills so we can better make that experience better. And so I think that's worth mentioning and noting. Next slide, please. And then SEL and family, just Christina Morales and her office, just their three core strategies, collaborative, trusting relationships, focus on learning, high-quality learning practices and family and school capacity development. So this slide pretty much just shows the different collaboration initiatives that we're doing and partnering together to empower our families so that we can continue to increase SEL skill development or take some of the things that are happening within the home. And so that can also matriculate and, and be shared within our school system. And so just some of the programs we've done, navigating cyberbullying, social media, what is the skill development and skills that students need? That was a big one, self-care, family wellness, planning for the future. We piloted this past year, or I want to say in April, a family engagement summit. The weather kind of dampened that, but we did get some, it set the stage for what we plan to do going into the next year because we had Windsor families. Hey, we're going to put you all on a panel and what are you doing well as you're learning the SEL skills and things that you do at home? And how can you empower other families? So now it's the family, it's the home, it's the, the school system. And it was amazing. And then we have so many SEL ambassadors, we had middle school students, we had high school students that were leading workshops and facilitating that. And it was just a powerful moment to say, this is the collectivist aspect and mentality that as we empowering everyone and centering the student in their voice, it's just a beautiful thing to see. So it's been very successful for us. Next slide. All right, so the question that was posed, that I was taught, we were tasked with tonight, how are we assessing effectiveness? Obviously, at the end of the day, we can take the qualitative things away, but how are we affecting the, assessing the? Obviously, at the end of the day, we can take the qualitative things away, but how are we affecting the assessing the effectiveness? Next slide, please. So CSD, starting with the state of Connecticut, Department of Education. This is, they have partnered with the largest social emotional learning organization, company Aperture Education, who leads the nation in assessing social and emotional learning. And so, their priorities, scale up SCL based on statewide findings provided by districts to approve student academic and behavioral outcomes. Intensified tier one supports based on feedback from districts, or a survey that, the year that I came in, they sent out a survey to districts across the, across the state and say, hey, social emotional learning is something important, we want feedback to see, is this something that you all would be open to? And it's been an amazing thing led by the state. And so, they chose Aperture Education, the DeVro Student Strength Assessment, i.e. the DESA. And so, it's a state-level priority on SCL. And so, currently, there are three cohorts within the state. We were cohort one when I first entered into the district. And so, currently now, there's over 125,000 Connecticut students that are being assessed on social emotional learning. Our district has been leading that charge. We were in cohort one and a lot of the findings, a lot of the kinks and things of that nature, the state has been very impressed with how we are not only assessing students based on the strengths assessment, but how we're also taking this data and then making it real-time through our differentiated learning, our tier interventions, and how we're building a culture around social emotional learning. Next slide, please. So just quickly, so what our DESA cycle thus far, K to eight, has been leveraging the student, the DeVro Student Strength Assessment, and it's been completed by our K to eight educators. So what we really love about the DESA, and there's a small snapshot of a DESA mini what we've been using, it's strengths. So it's a observation, strength-finding assessment, i.e. it's a behavioral rating based on strengths for students to be able to help triangulate the experience. So over the past four weeks, what are some of the behaviors that students have inhibited and displayed within the classroom experience? All right, and teachers real-time, so it's not like your traditional say, hey, we want to penalize. Social emotional learning is not a system or a framework that penalizes. It's about what are those strengths that now we can leverage? And as we're working on the other skills, we can draw from that. That is helping our students feel more of having increased sense of belonging within the classroom. It's helping our educators pay attention to the nuances of, hmm, so if I am doing a tier one lesson and I have a crew dee, crew dee might be fine over here, but I have a Michael, I have a Damian, I have a Malani, and now I'm able to say over the four, past four weeks, this is what I noticed, I can assess it. And then now the SCL specialists and our team, we're able to then disaggregate that data. We can empower administrators within the schools. And then not only can we do that, our SCL team now is able to then provide the skilled development within small groups, within one-on-ones, kind of the bar that I, the chart that I showed a few slides back, to then be able to help the students with those skills and then using our exemplars like the crew dees of the world, the Tristens of the world, to then build peer-to-peer models within those same kind of tiered interventions. And so, this is something that's been very successful for us. And within our high school, we piloted last year the student self-reflect, so allowing our high school students to be able to now answer questions around their social emotional learning, self-assess themselves, and then we can disaggregate that data and say, based on these SCL competencies, wow, you're very strong in relationship skills, you're very strong in self-awareness, ah, responsible decision-making, you need some support. And then now, we can give them the skills and support to then be able to put that into motion and put that into action. And so, that's been very successful for us. Next slide, please. So just really quickly about Aperture is nationally standardized, strength-based behavior rating scale. It assesses social and emotional competencies and is intended to help support instruction, document student strengths and areas of need. It provides data to track interventions and monitor progress at individual and group levels. And it sits, and the system enables us to make strategic database decisions about SCL within our schools. And that's so many things that we've been able to do thus far. So based on this data, the national average, so Aperture empowers over a million students nationwide with the DESA rating. And so, just to give you, on the left, the bar chart, it shows you the national average. So 16% of the nation has strength. Students showcase and exhibit strengths within their SCL competencies, typical, 68%. In need for instruction or further skill development, 16%. So in year one, within our assessments, as we were in cohort one, you can see that Windsor has 15% of students that needed for instruction at the end of the year. Going into our first assessment window, 67% were typical and 18% exhibited strength. A lot of that, obviously, students were matriculating back from the pandemic, they were coming in. So we had some of the, some of those skills that was lost because of the remote learning. And then as we can see going into this year, our most recent rating, we've seen growth. So just being able to focus on our SCL competencies and skill development, having an SCL team that can disaggregate that data and work with the students real-time and support the educators. We've seen substantial growth with 29% of our students this academic year having SCL strengths and being assessed as strength. 57% typical, so some of that has gone, some of the students that were typical went up into the strength, what we're super excited about. And then 14%, still around the 14% that need instruction. And so, this data is going to fluctuate year to year because obviously, as students go from a fifth grade into middle school, they're going to have new experiences and new skills that they're going to need to potentially leverage. But the infrastructure that we've been able to create thus far has been amazing. And so, I'm going to pass it over to our SCL specialist, Damian, to what does this data and what does it look like on the ground? He's going to be able to share that information.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you for your time. So I'm going to go over what it looks like in terms of Clover Street. We're going to start off, Dr. Mallory did a great job talking about the DESA cycle, so I'm not going to get into that. I'm going to go into the data analysis, we're going to take a look at one student and we're going to try to, we're going to track, take a look at a snapshot of her DESA data. We're also going to look at the tiered interventions, how do we know that it's actually working and then what the results look like? So, next slide. So, first slide, this is a third-grade student. So what I first want to do is draw your attention to the left side of the slide where it indicates the reference. These are the numbers that Dr. Mallory was referring to. So when we, when every single student, K through eight, in Windsor Public Schools completes, when that DESA is completed, they get a score. The score will indicate where they rank specifically for that time period. So if you take a look at this snapshot, with this is, again, this is a third-grade student. When, when her teacher did a DESA score, did her DESA in September, her score was a 38. And if you look at it on a scale, that will bring her at a need for, need for further instruction. So she's in that 28 to 39 range. Then intervention took place, the second assessment happened, and she bumped up from a 38 to a 44. So she moved from need to typical. Then more intervention took place, and by the end of the year, she moved from a 44 to a 53. In an ideal world, this is what we would want to see for every single student, we want to see gradual progress. And one of the reasons why I selected a third-grade student is because at Clover Street, our third graders are the ones that are experiencing the most amount of, the biggest change, the greatest transition of any student in our school. They also, they make up the majority of the students in the school. So just think about that for a moment. They're the youngest students in the school, they are the majority of the students in the school, they're the newest students in the school, and they're experiencing the greatest change and greatest transition. All at the third grade, all at eight, seven, sometimes nine years old. So that's why normally, when you're looking at a third-grade DESA score at the beginning of the year, it's going to be low. It's expected to be low. These are new students, they're in a new school, new environment, everything is new for them. So that's why over time, we're able to see that with the right kinds of interventions over the course of the school year, you should see this gradual progressive growth. Next slide. So what happens in between those periods when that DESA is taking place? So it's broken down into two main categories. We're either talking about tier one instruction, which includes the entire school, the whole class, or we're talking about tier two, tier three. Every single student, when they are marked present for the entire day at Clover Street, the majority of them experience everything you see in the tier one section. So off the top, the order is a little off, but the first thing that they experience is a morning meeting. That happens right in their homeroom classroom, that's an opportunity for the, for the classroom teacher to kind of set the tone for the day, get a sense of what's going on with the students, give them an opportunity to share or express any concerns or issues they may have, or just want to share some fun stuff they did last night or what they did over the weekend. It's an opportunity to build community within the classroom. What that also does is it creates a chance for the classroom teacher to, to allow the students to demonstrate, what does social management look like? I'm sorry, what does social awareness look like? How do you know that you're supposed to sit quietly and respectfully when one of your classmates is speaking? So it provides an opportunity at the beginning of the day for the classroom teachers to reinforce and let the kids, give the kids an opportunity to demonstrate those SCL skills. Their self-management skills, the ability to just sit down on a carpet, first thing in the morning, you just got to school. You're excited, you're amped up, you got some breakfast, you're talking to your friends. Now I got to sit down on the floor and I have to do it quietly and I have to respect everyone else around me. That's SCL happening right there in the mix. So that's another opportunity where, again, the teacher has a chance to set the foundation at the beginning of the school day of how SCL is going to manifest itself through every single part of what happens with those students. Then we also have the morning broadcast. Again, every single student receives this tier one support. Every single student, if they're present for that school day, when they see that morning broadcast, they're going to see that snippet that talks about what the social emotional learning competency is for that particular day, that particular week or that particular month. So every day, they're hearing the language, they're getting an example of what, what is social management? What is self-management? What is responsible decision-making? And they're getting it from their peers because on the morning broadcast, it's their fellow students that are ones that are presenting this information. Then also with school-wide classroom expectations, a student's, a classroom's ability to transition from one, from one space to another one in an orderly fashion is an example of social awareness. It's them understanding that I have to stand in line quietly, I have to be aware of the fact that I'm passing by other classrooms and other groups where education is happening. So I have to listen to, I have to also pay attention, listen to instructions of my teacher. This is all happening in the moment, just like I said, something as simple as transitioning from one part of the school to another one. So that lends itself to our classroom and school-wide expectations. Then our SCL block, that is for the past school year, that was the last period of the day and every single classroom teacher took that SCL block seriously. So when we talk about SCL, it's both explicit and it's implicit. It's explicit when we're, you know, when we're saying, hey, we're going to carve out some time today for just this specific SCL activity. But then it becomes implicit when classroom teachers are breaking the students out into centers. If anyone that spent enough time in the classroom knows that the moment you divide your kids into small groups, it could be chaos if you don't have the right structure and system in place. So when the teacher is doing a small group by the kidney table, she has to have a level of understanding that, one, the students know how to transition from one space, from one center to another one, and they're able to do so effectively without anybody putting their hands on each other, without there being chaos, without any kind of madness. And again, that's an example of social emotional learning happening implicitly and explicitly in the classroom. And then we move on to our tier two and tier three groups, that's when we're dealing with smaller groups. So in instances like that, I'm either pushing into the classroom, I'm taking groups out of the classroom, and we're utilizing second step, we're using center intervention. We introduced Lego education this year, which the kids absolutely love. And then for some students, they simply cannot function effectively in a small group when it comes to SCL. So those are the students that I, that I will do my check and checkouts with. So I'll check in with them first thing in the morning, check in with them throughout the course of the day, check out with them at the end of the day, make sure that they've stayed on task. And then we also will, sometimes we'll do some, I'll do some push-in instruction for those students and do some pull-out instruction to help support them. Because again, we have students that have a lot of behavioral challenges and some of them just can't function in small groups. So, but that does not mean that they should not have the opportunity to develop these SCL skills. So if they can't function in a small group, then we work one-on-one. Next slide. So how do we know it works? Well, the proof is in the pudding. You take a look at our third-grade, fourth-grade and fifth-grade snapshots where we are comparing the beginning of the year DESA data to the end of the year DESA data. If you look all the way across, for the most part, we see growth in every single category. At the beginning of the school year, our third graders for need for instruction, we're at 25%. By the end of the year, they bumped down to 18%. They started off with, we said 48% that were typical, we went up to 63% by the end of the school year. We started off with 27% that had strength and we went down a little bit to 19%. And again, it's important to understand with the third graders, they are the most challenging and the most, the most, the toughest group to work with because they're so young. So we expect that these kind of numbers are going to fluctuate, but overwhelmingly, we still are seeing growth between, with our third graders from the beginning of the school year towards the end and towards leading to the end of the year. Same thing with our fourth graders, we've seen a change from 20% of need for instruction down to 12% by the end of the school year. We've seen typical go from 66% to 59%. Why did it go down? Because we saw an increase in strength. We went from 14% to 29%. So 15% growth when it came to fourth graders. And if you look at our fifth graders, about the same. We went from 13% to 14% when it comes to need for instruction. For typical, we went from 80 to 65%, but if you take a look at strength, we saw an increase from 7 to 21%. So in every single one of these situations, in every single one of these data points, you can very clearly see that, one, the interventions are working. Two, it's demonstrating a change in the SCL awareness and SCL competency for our students, but we also know that there's more opportunity for growth and there's an opportunity for us to continue to build on the foundation that we've established these last couple of years and really kind of take it and push it to another level. Thank you for your time.
And quickly, we'll have a good update, a quick update from our SSC, Ms. Gutierrez.
They don't leave me much time. So I will be very brief. So SCL at the high school, what we have been doing is continuing with our SCL competency lessons, working mostly with students one-on-one, also with some small groups and mediations between peers. We've been working, doing tier-two workshops as well to address some of the challenges that we have seen. And continuing to collect data and that highlights the progress in areas that we also need to grow in. We're capturing data on behavioral infractions, attendance, academics and also peer relationships. So we're really looking forward to next year and, you know, just taking this, you know, the SCL at the high school to a higher place. And, you know, the team is working extremely hard to utilize that data to build more workshops, more, do more groups and one-on-one work with our students. And we're also looking forward to working with our incoming ninth grades, I just have to give a plug, to the Fresh Start program. We are utilizing our student leaders, which right now, I think we have 28 signed up for just the Fresh Start program. We're utilizing them to work with our incoming freshmen in the Fresh Start program this summer. And we're going to continue that work from when they start school all the way up until they become sophomores. So that's really exciting for us and we're continuing to work and do what we do with our SCL team. So thank you. And I just want to say, thank you all for supporting us. This class of 2023, I was the advisor for, they have done absolute amazing work. And it's in part to their abilities and strengths and that undercurrent of SCL support. So thank you all for keeping us here and letting us do this work.
Thank you. Next slide. And so, these are just some student reflections I don't have to get into, but you know, obviously, I valedictorian crew dee. Sometimes high school can be a lot, but it's important to really understand what is best for you by being able to have the self-management skills to truly put your best potential out there. And so, we have tons of these reflections, not in this presentation, of just our students, of how the SCL skill development is actually impacting students throughout the district. Next slide. And so, where do we plan to go? Collaboration with our Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services, Dr. Haiti and her team. Just like I mentioned earlier with that SCL academic integration, knowing that it's not this thing over here, but it's both and, and that we can continue to do amazing work. Increases in teacher SCL competence, so professional learning through video modeling and WPS teacher demonstrations. So taking a lot of our exemplar teachers and saying, hey, you do SCL really well. And as we're helping new teachers entering into the district, how can we leverage you all and build this community of skill development, but also best practices and capturing snippets of that? And so, we're looking forward to doing that. And so, just a kind of ongoing dream of the SCL team and of the district, I'll just use one. So example, experiences with instructional shifts, you know, students, if it's kind of the standard with students will experience working with. You know, students, if it's kind of the standard with students will experience working with unfamiliar vocabulary words in their literacy texts. So then a S E L connection to students, what self-management skills will students need to use in order to complete this task successfully? And then the teacher connection, what self-management skills will teachers need to use in order to help students successfully complete this task? So I think just kind of that language barrier around the skills and knowing that, hey, if we have the skills, the students have the skills, that only gonna continue to have, pay amazing dividends for the academic performance and indicators that is what we want for all of our students. Next slide. And then supporting measuring decreases in absenteeism, behavioral reforms, shifting to climate and culture by reimagining M T S S and partnering with our M T S S teams. Increases in family engagement and skill development. One of my big projects this summer is creating this robust digital database linked to learning. I was showing Dr. Haiti before this meeting of literally taking what's happening in the classroom and creating content digestible for parents. So they can see how, what are the S E L skills that their student is using if they are in small groups? If it isn't tier one? And that cuts across whether it's S E L in math, if it's student-led, if it's science. S E L is happening all throughout of it and based on kind of the digital resource we're gonna create from them. I think it's gonna help more of that advocacy as well. And then lastly, just continue to be a model for the state of Connecticut and the nation, national, state, local presentations. We got re-invited to present our district again at Harvard. The academic in me is stoked about that. So looking forward to just representing Windsor again at Harvard in August and just continuing to show the good work. Next slide. So quick celebrations and this is how we're gonna end. Just to know that the S E L team has been valued. 2021, 2022 Staff Member of the Year Clover Street was Damian Morgan. And so that was just outstanding and amazing. This year at John F. Kennedy, one of our S E L specialists, Alyssa Cutler. She was voted as Staff Member of the Year. We've had Staff Persons of the Week, of the Month. Voted as Staff Go-To in crunches. They're like, we need somebody from the S E L team to support us. And so that just shows that this is more than just a moment, it's a movement. And so we're super excited that you all have been supportive. Next slide, please. This is just a quick snapshot of all of the national and state presentations that we've been asked to do, which is a humongous step up from year one and that's only continuing. So just wanted to celebrate that work. And then, yeah, next slide, the last slide, just two awards. So this, I wasn't able to, you know, present last year at this time. So this is kind of a backup award. So last year we were, by the Urban Assembly, one of our partners, we were awarded as the S E L Star School District, presented to Windsor Public Schools for showcasing high-quality social emotional learning. So that was amazing. Last Monday, Aperture Education, our assessment company, the largest in the nation. We were one of two districts that were awarded an S E L Impact Award. And so we are super excited that we just were awarded this award, which they have over, I think they service over 9,000 districts and it was only two that were awarded this Impact Award. It was born Texas, so I think a couple of minutes outside of San Antonio, Texas, in Windsor Public Schools. So those are our celebrations and our updates. So thank you. Oh, and I also forgot, this just came in my email and I printed out copies, so I'll just hand this out really quick. The state actually sent us a great kind of light message. So our president is okay with our approach to, you know, I know it's a big deal.
Definitely.
So they just sent this email, it's actually Dr. Hill, this letter from.
Thank you.
And so I thought it was cool, to my knowledge, I know it's a district that has gotten kind of the recognition. So, yeah, we'll take the win as we continue to model everything from, you know, the best of Windsor. So.
And Dr. Haiti, can you make sure that our remote, Julene gets a copy of this sent to her?
Yes, I will. I'll have Sally send it.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Okay, questions? I'd like to start off going back and forth and so it's starting with Darlene and then to Mr. Halleck.
I don't have any questions. I just wanna say that I think it's fantastic and I really loved having the overview and a better understanding of social emotional learning and how it's being implemented. So thank you for your work and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Halleck, any comments or questions?
Um, thank you. I do have a couple of questions, if I may. I'm just curious how, you mentioned supporting your support staff. I'm just curious how that has changed from last year to this year? And then how you expect to support them as we move forward?
Alex, I'm sorry, I missed the first part, support our staff?
Yes.
Yes, so one of the things that a lot of our educators was asked for, right? Just the short bursts of, right, digital content that can be, support them so they can see better the linkage of what they're actually doing, so making it more explicit. So I've been working with our admin team to be able to do more skill development P Ds with our staff, even if it's going to some of the P L Cs, professional learning communities that our schools have. And so we're definitely looking forward to supporting them. Also, as I kind of mentioned within the presentation, using our exemplar teachers to then at certain P Ds have it be driven by our educators, hey, these are the things that we're doing. These are the nuances, these are the skills that we're employing and this is how we're able to have that high increased engagement within the classroom. So, and then the last piece within our educators is working with our families. So as we're empowering our families, our families can be able to do this at home and then can be able to relay some of the things that they're doing at home with our educators to hopefully make the entire classroom experience that much better. Does that answer your question? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And then you did mention cyberbullying and bullying in general. Do you think S E L has helped students? As far as being aware of, of, I guess, navigating that so that they can stay awake from cyberbullying?
Absolutely, I'll be honest and I can have my team chime in. I feel like it is having a place, but I'll be honest, it's the dopamines that they're receiving from it. And so as much as we are being very proactive about that, I would love more, I would say more time around, like more dedicated time with the smartphones that all of our students do have, the supercomputers that they have in their pockets. And so I would love to see more opportunities to really educate Windsor Public School students on that. So yes, S E L is definitely, and it's not only just the skill development aspect of knowing that, but it's also kind of the implications. I think Ms. Lockhart was just mentioning, you know, Tristan and his experience was always like, hey, you've been the same person. But we just know that the big corporate technology conglomerates have the hearts and minds of our students. So we're doing our part and I think that's where we're gonna continue to try to push the family engagement piece. So yes, it's, we're doing it, but honestly, it's something that we hope to continue to take better strides at just moving forward, knowing that this is just a global phenomenon, that these kids were born in it. Wanna add something? Hold on.
Yes, the S S C especially has worked with our students at the high school at the highest level. We have worked with, you know, doing peer mediations. We have focused on, you know, those students that feel like they are being targeted. We have worked with them to help them with their self-esteem, you know, having a voice and really being vocal about the challenges that they're having. And with that vocalization comes a different type of power for them. So empowering them to really be able to, you know, work with a peer and explain to the peer how they feel, how that, you know, their interactions make them feel and having that peer think about and work through what is making them do what they do. So those are some of the things that we are focusing on with the S S C and helping students to navigate bullying, working with parents as well as the students themselves.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And that's all I have for questions.
Thank you. Mr. Wallaston.
I just wanna say thank you for all your hard work, our students. They definitely need you guys so much and all the work you do is very essential to their lives and just even their, as you mentioned, their self-esteem and their mindset and just becoming them. And I also would like to say congratulations on your department's awards. Keep doing the great work and shining the light in Windsor for the whole world to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Golinski. Do you have any questions or comments?
She may have had to.
Well, yeah, she may have.
May have had to disappear with Brody.
Very good, we understand. Ms. Taylor.
Two things. Well, I don't have any questions. I just have something that I wanted to share and I was waiting for this moment to share. So as Mr. Parker mentioned at the graduation, Mr. Wallaston and I spent a lot of time at the high school because that is, you know, our school, our liaison for the school. And, you know, they're going through a lot at the high school. You see me there a lot, students pull me aside a lot. And I wanna tell you what a student told me about you, Dr. Mallory. He said he was on the verge of not returning and that you spent some time with him. You, and it didn't stop there. It wasn't just one conversation that, I think the quote was, "Dr. Mallory saved my life." I didn't wanna continue going to school anymore. He'd been through some things and he wanted me to know that if it wasn't for some tactics and actually a male voice to speak with that wasn't a teacher, he wasn't gonna continue going on to school. So thank you. That's a real-life moment where you probably don't even know the impact that you're giving, all of you and your entire staff. But it's a moment where it's like, wow, you know, I was just checking in on someone, a friend's child that I'd known for years and he wanted to share about your impact and what you've done in his life. So thank you. I also want to share, I'm not surprised seeing Alyssa Cutler's name here. She has been very impactful in my son's life and my family. When you're talking about the family and media piece, I love that what you're doing isn't stopping in the classroom or in the walls of the building. You're bringing parents in, you're bringing adults in to learn the tactics. Because without that, it's not gonna be done across the board with fidelity. You're gonna need all of the hands on deck for these children. And so I have no questions. I just a huge resounding thank you to your team. I'm aware of real life. I don't need the data because I see the data. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cantor.
Thank you. I have a few comments and a few questions. I grew up and it was entirely different era when I went to school. And when I first went into the schoolroom, the classroom, I saw how kids were not school-ready and a lot of learning comes from home. And I know how disruptive it can be and I know it's really hard when you have special needs students because sometimes the over-excitement gets them over-excited and it's really hard to get them calmed down. And the teacher wants to be able to teach, so it takes a lot to calm them down. So I really appreciate that because not every student needs it, but a lot need guidance in certain things. The other thing I wanted to ask you was the, does the state of Connecticut Department of Education have set goals for S E L? And if they do, what are they?
So they have different benchmarks, but more so, so they, under the guise of social emotional learning, they call it like habits, right? And so all of those habits, well, their bigger goal, if we go back to just the, to the slide, their ultimate goal, and I just was speaking with the lead person, Kim Traverso for the state on that, their ultimate goal is to decrease behavioral outcomes for Connecticut students. So that's their number one priority around S E L.
Okay, and then on the page it says where we plan to go down here on the bottom, on the math one. It says in mathematics, they will have to explain their answers in a more nuanced way. For example, they will have to explain their solution half rather than supplying only their answer. So at this time, are teachers asking students to evaluate multiple solutions to solve their problems? And which one is a better one? Is that what that's referring to? And is that being done for more learning opportunities for problem-solving? What is behind that?
So a little bit, I probably would defer to Dr. Haiti on that one as that's.
So yes, so that's one, actually, it's a mathematical standards, practices that we have embedded in our curriculum where teachers are not just helping students get to the right answer, but also building that critical thinking skill, whereas they are able to look at different ways to answer a question and then which way is more efficient. And so we do a lot of that, a lot of that is built into our curriculum.
Okay, great, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Lockhart.
I don't have any questions. I'll echo what Ms. Taylor said about the impact you and your team are making throughout the building. I'm very biased, I'm glad you're here, my brother, doing the work within the district. I'm hoping that take this show on the road. As you like to say, you have a sheet here of where you've been and been invited to. I'm privy to the fact that you may be presenting at CADE in the fall. I'm, as CADE First Vice President, I'm privy to that information. So that's coming towards your way. Also, I also serve on the National School Board Association, National Board of Directors and we have our annual conference and I'm looking forward to having you submit that so that you could present this work to the country. So if you're looking to share the good work that we're doing in Windsor while sharing our successes and struggles, which we always do, looking forward to making sure that through Dr. Hill, we allow you and your team to do that. So more details coming. It will be in New Orleans this year, next year, so hopefully we can have you guys down there.
Legend of Bonton Roulette, that's what we say down there. At the Good Times Row.
Can we have the CADE conference in New Orleans?
So for the record, I am requesting through Dr. Hill, Dr. Haiti, that we try to find a way to give a R F P to the National School Board Associations for this S E L team to present at the national conference in April of 2024.
And I will make sure I chaperone that.
Yes, I think you should. Ms. Batshout.
Thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Pennos.
Do we have data on improvements in behavior? For some reduction in, you know, serious, you know, behavior problems such as fights and whatever as a consequence of this? Were we gathering data for the future that would show that at the middle school, at the high school, as they go on, that these things are?
Yes, and that's the bigger plan of where we're going. So to make sure that it's not only just the S E L skill, but it's the absenteeism. So I'm on, you know, Dr. Haiti's on the district absenteeism, you know, attendance, you know, team. And that's where we work. And so it all is integrated in the line. And so we wanna be able to track all of those metrics and to, you know, to kind of showcase our efficacy, you know, in that area. So absolutely, and that's something that we wanna continue to work with our team, with the individual principals, with Dr. Haiti and her team and, you know, kind of the state. When I presented with them a couple of weeks ago, and me and Crutie actually, the state asked us to present our work. And they're starting to see kind of slight marginal declines within kind of the behavioral outcomes that they have. And so that's what we want for ourselves as well. So I look forward to giving you all an update on that, you know, in the future. Oh, go for it.
So I can add that we did actually see a decrease in chronic absenteeism this year and we also saw a decrease in our major infractions. So our out-of-school suspensions, our in-school suspensions. I was putting all this data for our alliance in the year meeting and it's really good to see that our absenteeism has decreased and we've been really trying a lot of different strategies. And I have to say that, you know, the work that Dr. Mallory and his team does along with our Office of Family and Community Partnership has definitely had an impact on students actually wanting to come to school. So that's, we can definitely speak on that.
Yeah, so like for example, what would you do, what do you teach with regard, you know, kids getting into screaming, you know, arguments with themselves and then, you know? know, how do you handle that, which of course it can erupt into a fight?
Well, it begins with helping the students understand. Actually, I want to take a couple of steps back because I want to go back to what Dr. Haiti was mentioning in terms of, in the question that you asked, Ms. Cantor, regarding the thought process of helping students figure out that there's multiple solutions to a problem. It's really important to remember, especially when you're talking about third graders, we're talking about young people whose brains are still incomplete. And so they don't quite know how to handle a situation where they might have a different way of getting an answer that's different from the person that's sitting next to them. And so when that happens, there's a lot of anxiety going on. There's a lot of stuff that's happening in terms of, how do I manage this? So one of the things that we're able to help these young people understand is how to develop your self-management skills. Like, it's okay to understand that my answer, the way I got my answer is going to be different from the way Mr. Panos got his answer. But guess what? We both got the answer. But helping students understand that they have to be able to manage those differences is where SEL comes in. So going back to your question regarding the other issue, it's really, really important that we also are, we're always looking for opportunities to help people, to help young people understand that they do have control of their emotions. SEL is not about teaching young people what to think, but it's teaching them how to think. It's teaching them how to think about their emotions. It's teaching them how to think about their ability to build relationships with their peers. It's teaching them about how to understand their place in the world, their small place in the world in a larger context. So that's what really SEL is about. And by having the opportunity to work in the classroom and outside of the classroom, it gives us a chance to help the students reinforce those skills.
And I just want to add, what we have been doing and focusing on is helping our students to figure out what their needs are. When a child's needs are met, they are less likely to disrupt the classroom. They are less likely to get in arguments with their friends. They are content. Think about hangry, right? When people are hungry, they get hangry. So, and I have to ask you all a question. If you could not feel that you were hungry, what would happen to you?
Die.
You die. So we are actually teaching our students to figure out what their needs are, to vocalize what those needs are, so that they can flourish, that they don't have the behaviors, so that they're not fighting not only themselves, fighting their parents, fighting their teachers, fighting amongst the peers. So this is what SEL is doing. This is what we are doing. We're teaching them. We are actually teachers. We're at a different level, though. You have teachers that are teaching academics. We are teaching them what their needs are and how to figure out those needs.
So you'd say that you're teaching students how to be self-interested in a positive way, to acquire real values?
Absolutely.
You know, such as knowledge and skills of acquiring knowledge and things like that, to feed that hunger that you're talking about?
That's right.
So that they feel good.
That is absolutely right.
You know, rather than simply be entertained all the time, right? I mean, this is getting back to the FaceTime, you know.
Video games and everything else, yes.
And it's hard. We understand that we are competing against this insane technological society that's ever evolving. Something new is around the corner. That's not Snapchat. It's not Twitter. It's not whatever. It's coming next and we got to be prepared for it. But at the same time, we also know that it's critical for young people to understand how to navigate that world. We may not know what's coming around the corner, but we know how to prepare them to navigate that when whatever's coming around the corner makes an appearance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No. No, she searched.
I just wanted to make sure she had up to. She's up there twice.
I know originally, Jolene, you didn't have any questions, but I see your name here. If you can hear me, if you have a question.
No, I don't have any at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jolene.
Yeah, because she popped up twice. That's why I wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Your name popped up twice, so we didn't know if that was an effort to ask a question. I want to thank you very much for the presentation. And one of the important things for me, I'm a big supporter of SEL, was next year, we're going to have a budget that we're going to have to deal with. And it was important for us to see how you're currently assessing how it's going. And it was important for me to hear where it's kind of going. And it's not something like a math test. You can see, does somebody get this? And they're getting the correct answer. But you've looked at different ways. What do teachers think? How is this working? Very supportive numbers.
For sure.
We see what students are saying and it's, you know, and the positive feedback. And they were seeing on, I guess, which is the standard for your assessment that's being used in the field, that we're moving in the right direction. So I'm hoping, and it was great to hear too, from Damian, about the third graders, about coming into a new building and all of that, and how that challenge in and of itself, you know, of what that expectation is in a new building, what that means. So I think.
I'm sorry, not to cut you off, but at Clover Street, what we also, what we always say is, our third graders are the freshmen of our building. That's it. They are freshmen. Yes. Third, sixth, ninth. So you always have to remember that those students are the ones that are going to experience the greatest transition and the greatest opportunity for challenges. And so when you know that going in, you got to front load. You got to be prepared the mo, you got to be prepared, not the moment they arrive. I'm getting ready for my new third graders now. I got to be ready for them before they show up because I know how the last two years have been. I know what's going to go, how it's going to go now with my third graders. So because I know that they are the freshmen of my building, they have to receive a special amount of attention and care. But I also know that the numbers are always going to be a little bit more fluid because they are a very unique population, just like incoming middle schools, just like incoming sixth graders and incoming high school freshmen, same type, just different ages.
And it's also good that as long as students continue in the Windsor schools, which we love to see that, but we know the reality is that the student population's changing every year. But hopefully they're building from now. This is only year two. We're building. So students coming in from Paquonic have already had with Sam and others at Paquonic, some experience in some of the five competencies areas. And so I think that over time, looks like we're moving in the right direction. So again, thank you so much for.
Thank you all so much. Thank you, Dr. Haiti.
Next item is committee reports. Seeing and hearing none. Next is other matters announcements and regular board meetings. The next board meeting, regular board meeting is Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, 7:00 PM in the boardroom. And announcements, should we hold announcements till the end? If, everybody okay holding announcements to the very end? Okay. And then we can decide on it at that point. Audience to visitors, Ms. Daly.
Good evening. This is Robyn Daly from the Superintendent's Office. If there's anyone from the public who would like to address the board, you may do so in two different ways. If you are using the Zoom application on your mobile device or computer, you may enter your comments into the Q and A feature located at the bottom of your Zoom menu bar. Or you may raise your hand on your computer, if your device has a microphone, by selecting the participants icon on the Zoom menu bar and then clicking raise hand, or by dialing star nine on your phone. You will be given three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. When you are called on, you'll be prompted with you are now unmuted. For clear communication, we ask that you do not place your call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own.
Again, for people in the, in the building, Mr. Lockhart will hold up a red card at two and a half minutes and then hold it up at the three minute mark and keep it up saying, please wrap up your remarks. Anybody in the boardroom would like to address the board?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is William Pelkey. I reside at 133 Portman Street here in the lovely town of Windsor. I first just wanted to, again, as I do every time I speak, try to continue a push for technical and career education. I think that is something that is paramount to our students and later on to society. I know you were going to be looking at 12B later on, discussion on para-contract negotiations. I would very much advocate for as best supporting those individuals as we can. Sometimes the people who serve in those positions are actually are most dedicated. And as Dr. Haiti even suggested when we talked about new administrators, that's where they start. They start in the mailroom, as it might be, and they'll work their way up because they're dedicated to it. And I think that we oftentimes should be supporting those people the most. One of the other things, and really my main reason, is I was a little concerned with some of the public commentary that was allowed in a public forum at the regular meeting last time, especially with folks being allowed to call sitting board members, really anybody racist. That's actually a pretty serious charge, or at least alluding to the fact that they might be. The town of Windsor in and of itself said that racism is a public health crisis and an emergency. And so those words shouldn't be pandied about when the discussion in what was going to be going on was related strictly to educational matters and state law. And I'm sorry, I prepared a couple of notes here, so forgive me for mumbling a little bit here. So when we were talking about the Black and Latino history course, we were, you know, you guys were looking to make it available to freshmen as a satisfying history elective, saying that it was, I'm sorry here, saying, and some people were just saying that the whole discussion was a waste of time and that board members, particularly Republicans, were racist for questioning the correctness or offering the full course to freshmen to fulfill that credit. But having that second reading is normal and is legally required a way to present curriculum change for board approval. The two readings allow for better discussion, understanding of the curriculum issues involved. But, you know, my neighbors, some of those people who came out to speak, obviously seemed to want to suppress any of that viewpoint. I was also a little taken aback that the administration in many ways seemed annoyed that there would even be a second reading. They, it's my understanding, and I may be wrong, but it's my understanding that you permitted many rising freshmen to actually register for a course that hadn't been approved by the school board. And I think that's technically a violation of the bylaws. But again, the point to me is that this is a public forum. It's not a complete open public forum. It's why Ms. Daly just had the admonishment about talking about people or children that are not your own. That's not in your purview. But in this particular thing, the fact that nobody on this board would want to speak up and say anything regarding decorum in proper function, I think that's worthwhile and should have been noticed. So thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address the board? Oh, Mr. Madison.
So when I was 17, I was in the Marine Corps, and I had a 13-year-old girl who was really into me and would write me love letters. The maturity difference between a guy in the Marine Corps and a 13-year-old girl is substantial. I knew a lot of 16, 17, 18-year-old guys. I knew a lot of 11, 12, 13-year-old girls. I don't know what kind of shelter life some of you might have lived, but it isn't always a good mix. I want to heterosexualize this discussion because I want to be very clear that I have a big concern about middle schoolers and high schoolers being mixed when the Gender and Sexuality Alliance has the word sexuality right in it. All I'm saying is that even if you take the LGBTQ plus aspect out of it is worrisome. So I don't know the specifics about how that mix would go, et cetera. And I'm all for high schoolers, right? The high schoolers from down the street are coming over for the chess club in middle school. Yay, right? But I think when sexuality is the explicit topic in the very name of the high school organization, that the difference in maturity between 16, 17, 18-year-olds, particularly male, we can go anywhere with that, right? And 11, 12, 13-year-old kids is worrisome. And I think that that becomes an institutional responsibility of this body, regardless of the nature of the funding. Yes, the funding's donated. Yes, it's not out of the budget, all that. I don't understand the details of all that. But generally speaking, it's not explicit budget. Okay, fine. The fact that it was given to this organization makes it an accountability of this organization. And the difference in maturity between high schoolers and middle schoolers, whether heterosexual, homosexual, trans, queer, doesn't matter, is night and day. I think we need to be very careful about that.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the board? Anyone online?
There's an attendee, but there are no hands raised and there are no questions in the Q and A feature.
Okay. Without objection, we'll close. Audience to visitor? Audience to visitors, close. Next item is item number 12. Mr. Lockhart?
Move that the Board of Education move into executive session for the purpose of this, excuse me. I will start over. Move that the Board of Education move into executive session for the purpose of discussing item 12A, the collective bargaining agreement between the Board of Education and the United Public Service Employees Unit, UPS EU, Custodian, Maintenance and Food Service and Safety Monitor employees, local 424-Unit 103, inviting Dr. Noah Haiti and Ms. Danielle Batchelder to be a part of the discussion and to discuss item 12B, the para-contract negotiations, inviting Dr. Noah Haiti and Ms. Danielle Batchelder to be part of this discussion.
Go second.
Motion made by, sorry, motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Nay? Abstention? Motion carries 900. Can we make sure that Jolene has the link?
She does.
Jolene, if we could confirm that you do have the link for the executive session?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lockhart. And we are out of open session at 9:48 into executive session, and then we will come back. It's 10:18 and we are back in open session. Is there a motion?
Move that the Board of Education vote to ratify the agreement between the Windsor Board of Education and the United Public Service Employees Union, UPS EU, Custodian, Maintenance and Food Service and Safety Monitor employees, locals 424, Unit 103, covering July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. We'll go to the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Nay? Abstention? Motion carries 900. I know we had, did not have room for announcements. If you have something important, I know we're under a time crunch here. Anybody, any announcements? Nathan?
I'm looking to this camera. This is the camera I'm looking at, right? This the one we use? Kevin? All right. Well, today's my grandmother's 91st birthday. All right, Grandma? Happy birthday, Grandma. I love you so much. Your sacrifices that you've made afforded me a beautiful life to live with these beautiful people up here. So happy birthday, Grandma. I love you so much, so, so much. Also, joining me today, I have my beautiful fiancee in the crowd.
And she stayed the whole time.
Yeah, she stayed. Oh. Yeah, she stayed, oh, you know, I rode with her this time, so she couldn't leave. But thank you. Happy birthday, Grandma.
I knew there had to be some reason she was still here.
I just, I just.
Ms. Cantor?
I just wanted to say have a happy summer and stay hydrated. Remember, the watermelon is the best to stay hydrated with, so, thank you.
Any last words?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay. Abstention. Motion carries 900. We are adjourned at 10:20.